I'd like to call to order the West Orange Board of Education meeting for June 4th, 2018, right here at West Orange High School. Mr. Calavano, please, real call.
Mr. Alper.
Here.
Mr. Charles.
Here.
Mrs. Mordecai.
Here.
Mr. Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartzbaum.
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Notice of meeting, please take notice. The adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in the following manner: That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 9, 2018. That said notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said notice was posted in the Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. I need a motion for the close of public meetings minutes of May 21st, 2018?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano? All vote? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Schwartzbaum is staying. Before I get into the superintendent report, I want to deviate a little from the agenda. We are here with our honored guests. At the last board meeting, my colleague Mark Robinson made a motion and a resolution, and the board unanimously approved the creation of the Dylan Pinnell Trailblazing Award. This award is in honor of former West Orange High School Dylan Pinnell for his vision, dedication in establishing the junior ROTC program here at West Orange High School, a program that has expanded to over 125 students. We are honored tonight to have in our presence Naval Academy recent graduate Ensign Dylan Pinnell. So if we can have his mom and dad and -- Ensign Pinnell, please come up. Mr. Robertson will like to make the presentation formally.
(applause)
Congratulations.
(inaudible)
Good job.
Good job. Okay. We're going to continue on with the written agenda, the superintendent report. Mr. Rutske.
Thank you. We're going to stay in our seats for the ESL program update. This is just an update from the last board meeting where there was some feedback provided to all of us, and Mr. Mendez and Mr. Plata went out and did some more work on this. So we're going to get an update from both of them. And then we're going to have a presentation where we will ask you to go out into the audience by Nancy Mullen, who's going to talk about the safety and health plan specifically for the CTE program. She'll review the overview of the program and talk a little bit about the rubric that needs to be done and the indicator satisfied. And then we're going to turn it over to Mr. San Diego, our Director of Technology, to talk about the future-ready presentation. Again, just a presentation to give you time. Both of those presentations will be on next board meeting's agenda for approval. That way you have time to look through it. Send us some emails, questions that we can answer for you prior to the presentation. Both will come back next meeting to answer them publicly. And then we'll just give a very brief update on our graduation requirements and then move into the normal HIB. So with that, let me turn it over to Mr. Mendez. Mr. Plata, can you come up to the microphone and provide an update, please?
Good evening. For decades, how we educate language minority students has been an area that's been highly debated and highly politicized. How we directly instruct our students, how we group them, how we do or do not offer bilingual services. It's been something that's been studied since the 70s and again extremely debated on both ends across our nation. When we think about various groups first coming to the United States in the 1700s, there was a greater acceptance at that point because everybody was coming from somewhere. The cultures were holding on to their maternal language and they were making sure that their children were learning that language. We then moved into more restrictive periods where policies were repressive, where monolingualism was really being exerted as the right way to go, and where our educational system took a turn to say English only, to say one culture only. We saw different phases where it was imposed on immigrants and/or people from different cultures to only learn one way. This is including Proposition 187 in California, if we don't know, when they one day closed all of the school doors and set all immigrants out. No bilingual, no ESL, no instruction for those students. Even after Lau versus Nichols in the same state found that it was unacceptable to think that just offering equal education, same textbook, same resources, same teachers, was enough for the bilingual student. Instead, the Supreme Court ruled that equal wasn't enough in what we offer and offer access to. Instead, we have to make sure that students are learning meaningful education, and they defined meaningful as education that could be understood in their language and/or supported, not only for language acquisition but for content. So then the question there in those cases and subsequent in Castaneda versus Castaneda became not just are they learning language, but are they able to compete with their monolingual peers? Are they able to learn and move through the grade levels with their monolingual peers accessing content? They called this a Castaneda test, and they gave us three prongs to begin to look at. One, the school program has to be anchored in sound educational theory. Two, adequate resources and personnel must be evident in any school program that's looking at supporting its ELL population. And that the school program must reflect sound practices and results. So it's not just the practice itself, but we must be yielding the same results or comparable results with our ELLs as we are with our mainstream students. This comes from the Office of Civil Rights. This comes from the NJ DOE and/or the Supreme Courts when their ruling with ELLs. To the extent that bilingual code was adopted and mandated for every public school district that we must follow. When we think about the results then, we're looking at many different areas. We're looking at compliance. Are we meeting the required number of minutes that the students need to? And in that research, we are basing our recommendations based on our findings, right? We need to be compliant with what we're offering our students. When we're looking at retention, how do we compare with our Ls being retained versus our mainstream students being retained? When we look at our graduation rate of our Ls, our graduation rate for our district is 80, right, in the high 80th percentile. For our Ls, it's 73.1%. Last year, 56.1%. We have to compare not just language proficiency again, but it's also content and how are the Ls performing in comparison to and with their monolingual peers? When we look at our portfolio process, 50% of our students are going through portfolio who are Ls. We have to consider over classification in special education. We have to look at students who are exiting, and are they exiting at grade level proficiency? Currently, 23% of our students are. We have to take a look at our students who are Ls, able to access advanced placement and CTU courses and college credit-bearing courses if they are learning a language, and do we create opportunities in a very strong language program plus content that will allow them to access that? And if not, they're not going to be competitive. Cummings did a study, eight-year longitudinal study, about discriminatory practices when placing students because we say, oh, this student can speak well, they can communicate, so they're proficient, versus grounding our decision in our placement and our program on academic language and their performance as compared to monolingual peers. So when we think about the research, we're thinking about advantages of speaking two languages. We're thinking about the fact that a student's first language helps them move through the second language. When we look at the characteristics of effective instructional programs, and we think about immersion, it's not just immersion, it's structured immersion. It's teachers who are trained specifically to teach language acquisition plus scaffold that instruction enough so that the students are not falling behind in content with a cumulative disadvantage. So year after year after year, they're losing their content because they don't have the language, and then they are not graduating on time and not able to access those advanced proficient courses. We're looking at immersion that might work, yes, for students who are coming in perhaps at grade K, grade 1, but does it work for students who are at risk? At risk being defined as those students who have below-average general ability, poor first language ability, low socioeconomic status, and ethnic minority group status. So we already have gaps in our performance when we're looking at our minority students, right? And then we have additional gaps when we're looking at disabilities, and additional gaps when we're looking at language barriers. All of these things have to be taken into consideration. When we look at students coming from some of our countries, because not all of our countries are in this situation, but for some of our countries, what is the literacy rate in that country? Because transfer is critical for a student to be able to learn a second language and continue to excel in content. For some countries, war-torn countries, literacy rates are 14%, and then they're coming to our country not only to learn English, but they're also coming to learn content. With what specific strength in content are they coming? And that is important to West Orange because we do have 68 countries represented. We have 50 different languages spoken in our West Orange homes, 63% of which are Spanish, 18% of which are Creole, and 19% other. Of our 157 students at our elementary level, we've talked about that they are spread out throughout the district. And while this is in a model that we've been working with, right now, we cannot say that it is the most effective way to meet our students' needs by instructing their language acquisition and by helping them excel in their content. We need to meet the minimum, and we need to provide more. 90 minutes of instruction is not enough if we're giving them the 90 minutes. So the typical day of the L is to come into their school. They have six to seven hours of their day. Only 90 minutes, 45 to 90 minutes, is in a language that they can understand for our Level Ones and Twos. The rest of the day, they are sitting in a classroom where they do not understand the language. We looked at model programs across the state. The seven model programs that have been recognized by the State of New Jersey are Franklin, Linden, Howell, Vineland, Passaic, Atlantic City, Hoboken Charter. Five of those are public schools. Of those schools, four of them have a magnet philosophy, have to bring their students to specific schools to offer program because of geographical distribution. The ones that don't, such as Passaic and Vineland, Passaic has 18,000 students, we both have been in Passaic, of which 90% are speakers of another language. Franklin, the program that, yes, I initiated there, is now a model program. It has been recognized for the past three years as such, and Julia Choa is the supervisor of that language, of that program, who just was at TESOL and really talking about the strengths of the ability to group the students and the ability to service the students at maximum efficiency. At our last board meeting, the public, the board asked us to communicate more, get feedback, reach out, get the feedback from our staff. So we met with Gregory's staff, we met with our Washington staff, we're going to continue over the next few weeks to meet with the other school staff. We began with those two. We also met with parents at the Hispanic Foundation on Friday evening. From the staff, I think the top concerns that the staff presented were professional development and really feeling comfortable with the ability to teach our Ls. I have to say one thank you to our staff. They were very honest, very transparent, very forthcoming. They spoke, again, honestly to us about what their major concerns were, so I appreciate that. Because we want them to know and feel comfortable when they're instructing our Ls. Again, the top concern was their professional development and time to really learn how to work with the Ls. With that said, we already have Ls and the top number of Ls in those schools, so we need to give them, we need to give them the professional development. There were some concerns at Washington about spacing. We did a walkthrough and took a look at the classes, took a look at where the students would be. There is, there will be two extra classrooms that will be needed. One is currently a classroom that's being converted for the ESL, and the other is by a normal attrition, there were three sections in a certain grade, and next, four, and next year there will only be three, so we gain a classroom. So that's how we're gaining the classrooms over at Washington. Another concern was that if we brought a bus to Washington, would that be a safety issue? Right now, it presents itself as a safety issue. So Marie and I walked the building. Mr. Rutske gave us some alternative ideas, and we saw where the bus doesn't have to circle around the front, where it could come on the side of Franklin. There's a gate right there. Students would be able to safely enter the building. So we will be able to respond back to the staff with that concern. For the staff, there were two staff members who asked us about students being removed from their neighborhood school and having their friends, and we did discuss that. It is a concern. It is something that exists. Again, competing priorities when we're thinking about how do we offer students a quality, meaningful education as defined by bilingual code and by the Supreme Court. When we met with the Gregory staff, one of their concerns were the trailers. So Mr. Siggy looked into the trailers. They are currently up to code. There are students in the trailers. We have BSI students in the trailers. We have CST, the Child Study Team, is in the trailers. Yes, the strategic plan says that we should be moving away from the trailers. We acknowledge that. If we move to this recommendation, it would mean that two 5th grade classes go back to the trailers, and so then that's a fact. We did send out a survey to our staff so far, 30, to Gregory and Washington because we met with them. So far, 30 of the staff members have responded. 43.4% talked about that they are comfortable with the plan if they're given professional development. The others still have some questions, but did express that some of those questions were addressed in our, in our meeting time. They still have things that they would like clarified, such as instructional models, specific logistics, what would this look like in my schedule, how would my students be pulled, what would they be pulled from, et cetera, like, things like that. When they were asked suggestions concerning the proposal and specific things that they would like to see or need to see in order to be comfortable, the majority talked about training. They talked about an opportunity to plan alongside a specific instructional model. They talked about the ability to communicate with parents in the dual, in the second language. They talked about resources and materials to support instruction, not only in the general education classroom but in the electives. So we did have staff that were concerned about that. What resources and materials would we use? That the current resources that they have in their classes may only have a little section on ELL support, but would we be providing more? And so then absolutely, and what we're going to do over the next week is to begin to share a very specific plan on what this would look like, detailing the professional development, how much time, just like we did with the Danielson implementation, so that we could provide that to staff to then get more feedback and see if the comfort level rises. Of the staff who responded, 42.1% volunteered to be the ELL teacher. Today, we received some more emails, and so then we asked if we provided, if we did make this recommendation, if the board voted, would you volunteer to be the teacher for the Ls? And so far, that's the response. We did have one staff member who did say they were concerned that this was segregation, and that was the extent of that comment. At the Hispanic Foundation, the Deputy Mayor, Rodolfo Rodriguez, Vincent Cirillo, the town councilman, we met with them beforehand, and they invited us to attend the meeting and present to the approximate 40 parents and community members who participated. We presented recommendations, let the parents know that these were just that, recommendations, that today we would just be providing an update and that this was not on for today for a vote, instead for a future board meeting, and we asked them for feedback, concerns, and things we should consider. Of the parents who responded that had the children in the program unanimously, we had overwhelming support. There were very good questions asked, such as what's the difference between ESL and bilingual resources, and how would they be able to help their students with their homework? If they would be offered transportation, and what about daycare? And if we would be sitting with each individual group of parents to talk to them about your child will be going to this school, and these are the services that they would be receiving, and this is who their ESL teacher would be? So they did ask very good questions. We had one parent, a PTA president of Washington, ask some very quality questions about how the high school was working. He's a product of our schools, and why was it working there? And we explained that they're all at the high school. They have LEP classes. They have LEP classes in content area. That's where you see the result afterward. He came and he spoke to me, and he said he's in support of the program. His major concern was he thought we were going 100% bilingual, and we're not. And so then that was, I think a lot of this is clarification and clearing up some of the myths for, for some of our parents. There are questions, again, I think I covered that stemmed around ensuring resources, resources for parents to help with the homework. Some parents asked about the programs that they're receiving services in now, like the breakfast program, and then the ESL program in the evening. Would that move to their new school? And yes, it would, because the title funds would move there. And then spacing. We also met with ESL teachers to go over products, new training and resource materials. I'll let Mr. Plata talk about that and instructional model.
Okay, good evening. So yes, we met with the ESL teachers, and we discussed, well, they received professional development around the materials that were purchased and they were, they'll be using next year in the ESL sections. As part of that meeting, with some consultation from the professional development provider, we collaboratively discussed what different types of programs or implementations of the programs would be most beneficial for the students based on the materials that they currently have, the materials that we'd be purchasing, the staffing that we have with the ESL teachers, and the proficiency levels that we have currently in the district projected to be for the next coming school year. So it was a, it was a great conversation, discussion. They gave lots of input, and we will be having future meetings with them as well to continue that development process along with the building administration to continue to look at schedules and specific grade levels and variances that may occur because of the number of Ls that would be in each grade level.
I think another question that I overlooked in stating was teachers really asking about if we'd be grouping students in a class all together or not? And the answer to that is not, right? Our intention, that to me would move into a place where we're putting them all together all of the time. So we would not be. Bringing them to the building would be to offer a program and quality program. However, mainstreaming the students, bringing them through all of their electives and all of their content. One other piece, there was clarification, and some of us spoke about that today, in fact, with how long does it take an ESL student to learn English? Five to seven years. Five to seven years. It is not true that a student will learn English in one year, and that at the end of kindergarten they're proficient. They may know how to communicate basic English for social, everyday life, but we are measuring academic language for academic rigor so that they can compete and be able to succeed in comparison with their monolingual peers. The state gives us five years to teach a student ESL and to meet our AMAO, and so then that's our, you know, we have five years to do that. A student does not learn a language in one year. Now, does a student who comes in in kindergarten have an advantage over the student who comes in in 6th grade and 7th grade? Yes. However, many, and so we can go through that data, right? Many of our students are not coming in in kindergarten. They're coming in in their mid-years, right? Some of them come in in high school, some of them come in in 9th grade and 10th grade. At the high school then, we have the advantage of having them together in the LEP support and content area. At the elementary school is where we do not. I think that's the update. What did we commit to with our staff and with our families? We told them, the families, that we would now start to go to each individual school and meet with families at their individual schools. So over the next few weeks, we will be meeting with parents at their home school. We told our staff that we would now move to the other schools and begin to meet with staff from the other schools, Kelly and Mount Pleasant and Hazel, et cetera, to get their perspective. So that's our, our next step. Our survey, we're still collecting those results, and we will publish the plan for what might this look like instructionally and your schedules, and the pull-out and the push-in, and how will we service science and social studies, right? So those are the questions that they have. So we'll start to put those things together for the staff and begin to publish them, and then again, seek more feedback so that we can continue to inform our recommendations. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Charles, why don't we do board questions, and then we'll move on to the next piece?
You just want to, okay, well, sorry, Mr. Alper, just on the ESL program.
Sure. So you said the, currently the Ls have between 45 and 90 minutes that's in the language they understand in elementary, and then the rest of the day they have nothing. How does that change in the proposed model? What does the day look like then?
Sure. So in the proposed model, one, we would want to meet the minimum requirement, and that's the 90 minutes. We're not meeting the minimum requirement with the majority of students. The majority are getting between 45 and 60 minutes. So we would minimally want to meet the 90 minutes a day. Second, we would want to train all of the general education teachers that will be working with the students. Again, we had almost 50% volunteer. academic language for academic rigor, so that they can compete and be able to succeed in comparison with their monolingual peers. The state gives us five years to teach a student ESL and to meet our AMAO. And so then, that's our, you know, we have five years to do that. A student does not learn a language in, in one year. Now, does a student who comes in in kindergarten have an advantage over the student who comes in, in sixth grade and seventh grade? Yes. However, many, and so we can go through that data, right? Many of our students are not coming in in kindergarten. They're coming in in their mid-years, right? Some of them come in in high school, some of them come in in ninth grade and tenth grade. At the high school, then, we have the advantage of having them together in the LEP support and content area. At the elementary school is where we do not. I think that's the update. What did we commit to with our staff and with our families? We told them, of the families, that we would now start to go to each individual school and meet with families at their individual schools. So over the next few weeks, we will be meeting with parents at their home school. We told our staff that we would now move to the other schools and begin to meet with staff from the other schools, Kelly and Mount Pleasant and Hazel, et cetera, to get their perspective. So that's our, our next step. Our survey, we're still collecting those results, and we will publish the plan for what might this look like, instructionally, and your schedules, and the pull-out and the push-in, and how will we service science and social studies, right? So those are the questions that they have. So we'll start to put those things together for the staff and begin to publish them, and then, again, seek more feedback, so that we can continue to inform our recommendations. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Charles, why don't we do board questions, and then we'll move on to the next piece?
You just want to, okay, well, sorry, Mr. Alpert, just on the ESL program.
Sure. Um, so you said the, currently, the Ls have between forty-five and ninety minutes that's in the language they understand in elementary, and then the rest of the day, they have nothing. How, how does that change in the proposed model? What does the day look like then?
Sure. So in the proposed model, one, we would want to meet the minimum requirement, and that's the ninety minutes. We're not meeting the minimum requirement with the majority of students. The majority are getting between forty-five and sixty minutes. So we would minimally want to meet the ninety minutes a day. Second, we would want to train all of the general education teachers that will be working with the students. Again, we had almost fifty percent volunteer already of this, you know, of the staff who responded to the survey. Our training would potentially be in August for three days. They would get certified as well by the state in the PSYOP model, so that those teachers would be trained in a structured immersion, because immersion is not the goal, right? It's a structured immersion with all of the PSYOP strategies, Seltzer Instruction Strategies, along with the ESL teachers. So now, you have two teachers trained, not just the ESL, but the second teacher trained. Third, we're going to look to creatively schedule the teachers into the classes, so that an ESL teacher does not have to learn six different grade-level content areas. Right now, for every one ESL teacher in a building, they have to push in or pull out or service students across all curricula, K one, two, three, four, five. It's a lot. So here, in the new schedule, we're proposing, then, when we are able to have three teachers per building or plus, right, that those teachers could focus in at two grade levels. And so then, they're learning the content for two grade levels, and that's a great help for that ESL teacher. We believe by year one and a half-ish, two, then, we'll be able to start servicing math, right? We're going to have to work through the compliance first, and then the teacher to service math. We've just purchased National Geographics REACH program, which focuses on science and social studies. So by virtue of the resources and materials that we've just purchased, now those will support the academic language of science and social studies. That will be a year one. Okay? So the next piece is the PLCs. Now, the teachers will be able to plan together. How would we offer professional development? We would start with the PSYOP training and the training with the ESL teachers, but then, we would do rounds in each of the schools. So now, you pull a group of teachers, you go into a classroom, you see what's working, what's not, best practices. You confer, and then you try those strategies. That way, it's job embedded, it's real, it's authentic, it's not a workshop in a room, and then you go back, right? And learn, and that would be year-long. We would work with the teachers year-long. I think the students would benefit greatly from the combination of those models. With the supports, then, in the, in the, in the resources, now, these supports come with a greater component for parents. They come with a greater component for students to have that independent practice, and I think we'll see additional support there. So the students will still be integrated into their electives, they'll still be integrated into their mainstream classroom. They should be receiving at least, minimum, the compliance. We will plan for the year-two integration of math, and their resources will automatically integrate the academic language of science and social studies. Plus, we will have more ESL teachers together, so that they can build a professional learning community alongside their cooperating teachers, so that we can service the students. From a family perspective, we would be able to then bring and build community with our families in that school, because now, we may not have a family of seven, right? We have a family of eighty. And so now, we can build program for our parents, who definitely said they needed the support, right? How to work with their children with the homework, if they don't know the language. They wanted to make sure they still have their ESL classes, how to learn how to read. Some of our parents, right, that, that, these are things that they're expressing they'd like to learn, and so then, we'd be able to provide greater support to our parents. I know that, that pulling the students out of the neighborhood school is, is a big concern for us as well. I, I think something that the parents express, and something that the research clearly states as well, if, if I'm in a school, just because I live in my neighborhood, doesn't mean I'm identifying with the students in that classroom, right? Because we don't, we don't share something. I'm the one who's sitting in that classroom, and I don't understand anything that's going on. Here, we begin to build group, community, and personalization, because now, at least I have other peers with me who also are learning another language. So I, you know, there's two sides of that, and both are valid, you know, both are valid. But that's, I think, how we could definitely begin to improve, and then move, of course, towards dual language.
Any sense of where the services that we might be delivering to parents would, would be located? If they would be at Gregory and Washington, and would there be maybe transportation?
I think we would have to look into the transportation piece. We haven't solidified that.
And then, as far as extracurriculars, I know we had talked about previously about, you know, students maybe going back to their home schools for aftercare, but on the other hand, if, the older students who are starting to take instruments and chorus and that sort of thing, maybe that would make more sense, and they would want to be a part of the school that they're attending if this happens.
Correct, and that's what some of the parents were saying, as long as, right? So there, the option is there, if the parent wants to go back to aftercare, but we have aftercare at Washington, we have aftercare at those schools. So, you know, the parent might not decide to do that. The parent might decide, for those reasons, to leave their student at that school. And so then, it's up to the parent, and we would offer both, both options.
Right. And I'm just thinking, you know, off the cuff, that, you know, for, you know, nighttime activities and stuff, there may be transportation issues for folks who, you know, let's say, over by Redwood, if they're going to Washington, and so on.
That's a definite need to include.
So that there can be more of a whole community if this happens.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think my other question was about if there was going to be meetings at each school for parents, which you said there was.
Absolutely. We're starting that now.
You know, just because the Hispanic Foundation is over across from Washington, that there might have been a localized effect there, so it would be good to hear from folks who would have to travel.
Correct. So we will be, in the next few weeks, going to each school to speak to all the parents. This is just a first step with feedback, but we are giving you the update.
Sure. No, it's good to hear. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
More to go.
Sure. Thank you for going back and, and doing some extra, getting some extra feedback and attending the Spanish Foundation. I also attended.
Thank you for attending the Spanish.
Yeah, I also attended, and I, I think the parents were really engaged and asked great questions. Couple of things, I know at the last meeting, I asked you some things, you answered some things tonight, the graduation rate. But are the students graduating on time? And what is the dropout rate?
I can tell you that our graduation rate is seventy-three point one in comparison to the districts. I can tell you that fifty percent of the students are graduating via the portfolio process. Twenty-three percent of them are not exiting at grade level. And so, the question for how many are in that fifth year, I'd have to look at the fifth-year rate.
Okay. And, and what about the dropout rate?
I'll look at that as well.
Okay. Yeah, I'm interested in the.
It wasn't high dropout for Ls in particular, but I'll get the exact number.
Okay. And they're probably students that drop out that we're not even aware of, because they're frustrated. If they're only graduating with a twenty-three percent grade-level proficiency, I, I'm sure they're frustrated. Another thing I wanted clarification on, exactly how many committee members did you have, and how many principals were on that committee and parents?
The bilingual parent advisory council?
Yes.
There were nine parents, two principals, myself, Mr. Plata, and four ESL teachers, was, three ESL teachers.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's a question I got from the public as well, how many ESL teachers were involved? So thank you for responding to that.
And in addition to the council itself, through the course of these recommendations, Mr. Plata and myself have been meeting with ESL teachers to get feedback as we move forward.
Okay. I have to tell you, though, that I'm, I'm not happy about the trailer situation. We've tried for so many years to get rid of the trailers, and every year, we sign, we apply for the waiver for the trailers, and I'm not happy that we're going to go back into the trailers. I know the fifth graders at Gregory love the trailers, and the parents are mortified, depending on the parent, of course.
The staff brought up the concern as well.
Yeah. And I knew, I know that last year, we used the trailers at Gregory for election day.
Were closed election day?
I know, but on the days that were not closed for election day, we, we were using the trailers.
Okay.
So I'm concerned about using the trailers, and I know we, according, according to the, the strategic plan, we were supposed to be going in the direction of getting rid of our six trailers and not going back to using them. So that's a concern for me. Another thing is, I, I know in the budget, we set aside thirteen thousand for transportation. Will that be enough? Because we're going to be busing kids all across town.
I'm going to confirm those numbers alongside what Mr. Alpert just asked, and really take into account the whole picture of transportation, such as evening activities and/or events, and then give you a more comprehensive figure.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you for going back and doing the extra work.
Thank you, Mr. Mordecai.
Thank you.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Thank you. Thanks for going back and meeting with everyone. Do you get, is there a consensus that the current system needs to be changed?
I think there are perceptual views of the current system, and then, there are those of us, not just myself, whether it's our administration and our teachers who are looking at the data. So if a question is asked to the staff, do you think the ELL program is effective? I would say, well, what are they basing effectiveness on, right? Our teachers work diligently, our teachers work with our students to the max of their potential with the resources and the time that's allotted to them. Now, if we reconsider the allotment of time and the resources and the program model, I am certain that we can yield better results. When we look at effectiveness of the current program, I'd have to measure that by, I think, the things that I listed, whether it's compliance retention, graduation rate, percentage of students who are exiting the program and proficient in their content area, students who are passing their courses, students who are able to compete with AP and advanced-level courses, students in the honors program, students who are not classified as special education because of a language barrier. So I think I would have to look at all of that data, as we are, and use those as a measure for effectiveness of the program, and, and that's where the recommendations are coming from.
Can you just elaborate, based upon the meetings and the feedback, some of the changes that you are going to implement based upon the suggestions?
Sure. Definitely making sure we have a hybrid model available to the staff. One staff member was very generous in her vulnerability. She said, "I'm just afraid." You know, "I'm afraid to have so many Ls in my class and not be able to service them to the best of my ability. Train me, give me time to learn this, I want to do it, but I need training, and I don't feel that I have that right now." She did say, "Maybe we're moving fast," right? A, a lot of the staff is looking for time. So that was her, her comment. So what would we do? I, I think we have to script out and show the professional development plan, and really clarify that it's not just a three days or a one-shot, you know, stop with PD and that's it, and let the staff go. I think we have to really show the staff what we're going to do, let them contribute feedback into that. And then, the hybrid model, I don't think that the staff was favorable at all, not that we proposed it, but they wouldn't be in favor of having all Ls in one classroom, right? They want to make sure that they are able to provide the instruction to the Ls in the classroom, plus the other students in the classroom, right? That, that's another concern. The class sizes, that, that was a wondering for the staff, Washington in particular. Our classes are very small. An example, they said, is, you know, if I sit one student down, their book baggies rubbing up against the book baggie of another student, so those are real concerns. So then, we would have to look at the class sizes, make sure that our projections are, are real. And so then, again, today, we walked through the buildings, we looked at the classes, Maria and I talked about where we, where she may decide to put certain grade levels that have higher, right? Because your kindergarten only has eighteen, but your fifth grade might have twenty-one. And so then, making sure that they're in the right classrooms. There are classrooms downstairs, those classrooms are a little bit smaller than the ones on the main floor, so then, we wouldn't put the, you know, the larger classes downstairs. It would just be a, a skillful organization of the building, and really looking at the spaces and how the, the teachers would be able to service the students. Another piece they, they talked about was those resources, not just for the ESL teachers, but for them, for the mainstream teachers. And so then, we really need to pour into those ELA materials, those math materials, those science materials, the social studies materials for the general ed, and then see how we're going to supplement. And we have responses to that, we have the plan for that, but just sharing that with the staff and showing them what those resources would be. I think those would be some of the changes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Robertson?
Thanks again for beginning the process that we asked you to do, and, and really engaging people in critical feedback, and for sharing that critical feedback. Sounds like it's really informing a process, but I'm not sure that's, as I was listening to, listening to some of the criticism, I'm not sure that everyone entirely grasped, when you were talking about content, that what you were getting at is that for a child who's still learning English, that often, they weren't able to have access to their content in language. So if you're still learning English, and your, and your, your, your language is Spanish, you need to be able to learn science, math, social studies, in Spanish, as well as being exposed to it in English, or you're just, you know, I, I know if the situation were reversed, my children would, would certainly have, would have had a challenge at a much earlier age, so.
I think we, I think we are very familiar with that conversation, the second language, right? I'm learning English, and so then, you know, you have a student who comes here in third grade.
Yeah.
They're learning English, they don't know anything else but English, and let's say that they had a very strong educational background in their country coming here. Whether they did or they didn't, the learning of content stops.
Right.
Because now, they're learning English. And sitting in a classroom of content instruction, my math instruction stops. And so then, each year, I begin to fall behind, and again, there's a cumulative disadvantage to that student. We need to be able to support the student in English language and in the content. We're not doing that right now. That's one. Number two, each year, West Orange applies for the bilingual waiver. Bilingual education in the state of New Jersey is a required instructional strategy. It is a required program. We waiver with the reason given of geographical distribution, because the state recognizes that that directly impedes the ability to offer program. It is on the bilingual plan, it is on our, our, our report to the state every year. We are waiving due to our geographical distribution. Now, the research says, and it doesn't matter who we look at, Avando, Cummings, it doesn't matter who it is, they all say that we need to be able to use the native language to support the content growth.
Right.
Not just to teach the native language and then to teach English, right? But to support the content growth, so that while the student is learning English, they can continue to advance in content, and they're not falling behind. And then, when they do exit, then they should be competing with their monolingual peers, right? The third piece there is transfer. If I am, if I am strengthened in my native language, I am able, able to transfer the skills that I have in my native language to learning the second language. If I don't strengthen my native language, I won't be able to transfer, and that is a critical component of second language acquisition. It's a critical component of curriculum, so much so that our whole curriculum in general ed has been now built around transfer goals, right? The ability to transfer what I learned in one class to the next. So then, number one, we need to continue to support in native language. For our district, it would be Spanish and Creole, or French, once we move into bilingual, because the state requires that any district that has more than twenty students that speak the same language, we must offer bilingual. So for us, it would be Spanish and French for our Creole population. Second, again, when we look and examine our countries, and I'll put my country for an example, right, in Dominican Republic, fourteen percent literacy rate in our villages. Fourteen percent. Fourteen percent. So now, for this group, and again, we have sixty-eight countries represented, it's going to vary by country. Some countries have ninety-six percent literacy rate, and some have, you know, the fourteen percent. But if they're coming to our country, then, and they don't have strong content in native language, in native content, then how are they going to transfer? So our responsibility is to build both. We need to build capacity in both, and every year, we waive due to geographic location and distribution.
Excellent. Yeah, you know, it really helps when you kind of bring that to life, because I don't think people fully grasp when you're talking about that all the time. The other thing, too, I was looking at is, when I looked back at some of the numbers, and, and what was also a driving force towards consolidation at a couple of locations, what I saw was that there were many instances where you had, if you look at matching up grade and proficiency level, language proficiency level, you ended up with a lot of really tiny groups, small cohorts of maybe three to five kids.
Or one.
Or one child. And so, you can't build a program, you know, or it's hard to teach for that one child, then you end up putting that one child, then, with other kids at different levels of proficiency, or different grades, or both. And that is, that's a challenge. When we think about the challenge that we have with just kids in, in English, in English language right now, with instruction, differentiated instruction, we've been tossed around that term forever, right? And how challenging that is, when you have kids at different levels of proficiency in the same class, at the same.
We do it for honors, we do it for gifted, we bus all of our gifted up to central office to service them, we do it for honors, we do it for all of the other areas where students need to be serviced in a specific way. And so then, here's yet another.
Here's another example, and I think that bringing that to life, making that more concrete, that we're taking the same approach with honors. We've been bussing kids for, for hap, forever, you know, there's, some of the curriculum is built into their, within their building, but then, they're putting them all together and taking them somewhere else to, to be able to, to address instruction, you know, in a way that meets their needs. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a real challenge. I think bringing those numbers to life again, I think, will be a, a really big help.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you very much for your efforts, and continue. I look forward to hearing more about the feed, the critical feedback that you, that you're getting from teachers and engaging more parents in the process.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. My, my comments real, real quick are, do you think that the three days of training is sufficient, or do you think that the teachers feel that they, they need more?
Absolutely, three days. Absolutely, three days will never be sufficient. It's just a starting point. The teachers absolutely will need more, they're asking for that. That's their number one, besides spacing, right, and class size. Where will the training, when will the training take place? So again, we're going to publish a plan so that the teachers can provide feedback into that plan and work with the principals to design something that really works for the teachers. We would love to do that, again, by rounds, instead of doing it by workshop, because workshop doesn't quite cut it, right?
Right.
But rounds, job embedded, we're in your classroom, we're observing, we push into a different classroom, we're observing, we're coming back, looking at strategies, helping each other, creating safe spaces to take risk, et cetera. So it would be ongoing throughout the process with the supports and the materials embedded into the day.
Okay, so knowing that, don't you think that it's a little rushed? Like, here we are, we're looking at it at May, and then we want to put in it for September? That's the fundamental, besides the neighborhood schooling with me. I think it's just a little rushed, because I agree that the professional development should be longer and teachers are, by way of the survey, have said that. So why try not, why try to squeeze all that in for September? That's something. And then the last comment is, I want to see, I'm interested in seeing the numbers for the busing, because I don't think the 13,000 is close to what it's going to cost. But that's all I have.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on now with the safety and health plan for our CTE program. So if I can just ask the board members to step out in the audience, I'll ask Ms. Mullen to come up to the microphone.
Mr. Rucker, real quick, we're going to take questions from the public after the presentations on the ESL. I don't want it after.
Yes, correct.
Well, I could start while we're bringing up the document. Good evening. West Orange High School has nine state-approved career and technical education programs, one of which is considered hazardous. And that program is a culinary arts program, because of the use of tools such as knives and other kitchen equipment. As a result, we are required by the state to have in place an occupational safety and health plan for the district. The plan outlines the procedures to follow to ensure the safety and health of our students and faculty. It ensures that we train the staff and students to use equipment safely and what to do in case of an accident or an emergency. We have spent the last school year putting together the plan. A committee was formed at West Orange High School and we met on several occasions to compile the information required in the plan. Okay, we got it up, so that's good. We took this opportunity to include other courses in which equipment is being used to ensure all the same procedures are in place in case of an accident. The plan covers both the students and staff onsite and those who participate in a structured learning experience, such as a work-study experience. As a district, all of the components required in the plan already were in existence. However, they had to be put into one place. So the plan is currently over 400 pages. So that's why I have it in a PDF format. Although the high school is the only location of the culinary arts program, we included all of the schools in the plan, because many of the components are used district-wide. The state provides a template, which we use to complete the plan, and we utilized a rubric to ensure that we've included evidence for each section of the plan. So the board will be given that rubric to use as a guide to see each section of the plan. So I'm just going to, hopefully you can hear me, take this out. I'm just going to show you how it's set up. With the table of contents, this is in the PDF format, you can click on the bookmarks on the left to see each section. And I have it set up so it follows along. So 1.0 is basically the scope of the plan and it shows you what schools are included in the plan. The next section talks about the district and safety, health policy. We do include our board policies later in the plan. There are plan objectives that are required by the state, so they are all listed here. And the main thing is that in case of any kind of accident or an emergency of any kind, that we know what to do and that we have procedures in place. And this covers many areas, such as buildings and grounds also. That's a very large part of the plan. There's jobs, site analysis for each possible job and how it's supposed to be, you know, how that job takes place to avoid any accidents. The next section is organizational structure and responsibilities. And that talks about the need to have a school and district safety committee that meets throughout the year, twice a year, to review the plan and to make changes as needed. And there's an organizational chart, which is included in the plan and later in the plan, and the appendix is the, everyone who's named in the plan. The next section talks about hazard analysis procedures. And there are many things that we do in the district, district-wide, that need to be cited in the plan, such as local fire inspections. Throughout the plan, what I've done is I've noted where the information can be found. Some of it is within the document and other reports, because there are many of them, are located at central office and that's indicated in the plan. So that when the state looks at it, they'll know where it's located. And that's also for us to know as well, where is the information located? Things that you, I want to point out, there are inspections throughout the year in our schools. In classrooms, for example, teachers are expected to inspect the classrooms every day to make sure that there are no safety issues or concerns. And that's mentioned in the plan as well. The section five goes into the hazard analysis procedures. Many, I've mentioned already, fire inspections. There's insurance inspections, the committees can do site inspections and so on. And section six talks about how we educate our students, because that's a very important component in the plan. Later in the plan, the classes are listed and there are examples of how we educate our students. We identify and use safe work procedures, we go over all of the equipment and we have examples in the plan, not only from culinary arts, but from the woodshop, the auto shop and other areas where equipment is used on a daily basis. And we have to follow materials disposal procedures and emergency procedures and so on. This shows examples of what we give our students and we actually have a lot of different tests that we give our students. So they're tested before they can use different equipment and they have to have 100% accuracy before they can use that equipment. If an accident occurs, we have a system in place for documenting the accident. You know, have incident reports and so forth. We work closely with the nurse's office if we have to send a student down there. And we expect the students to be in compliance with the procedures of being safe. If a student is not safe after several offenses, they may actually be removed from the course, but that would be in severe situations, that's never happened. The next section talks about emergency procedures and it really is district-wide. We have a lot of these emergency plans in place, we have for every single school. So in the plan here, I have two samples. But I just want to note that when it's sent to the state, any confidential information will be removed. So that will not be public. And that talks about evacuation plans, what do you do if there's a hostage situation, intruders and so on, bomb threats. And that information will be kept confidential. The next section talks about training that the nurse provides, what to do if there's bloodborne pathogens and following universal precautions. There's training that takes place with staff. I have an example of the training from the nurse's office on pathogens and how to handle situations. And these are procedures that we have to follow within the classroom and in the building if an emergency does take place. And it was really good to sit with the committee and go over this and make sure everyone was aware and following the same procedures which we were. The reportable incidents and accident follow-up procedures, there are forms that have to be filled out and also there are procedures to follow who's notified and what steps you take. And all that information is in here, these are things, again, we're already doing, but it just had to be documented. There are certain health practices and procedures for programs and that's all listed in the document, in the appendix, again, with information from the instructors. The next section, the last section, is general safety, health and environmental requirements. A lot of this information here is located at central office with buildings and grounds. And finally, the last section are the appendices, which there are several and I did put links here, because they are lengthy. But, for example, there's safety checklists that we go through. So when you click on the bookmark, you can come and see the actual form that is used by the district and is on file. There's other district forms that we use, for example, when an accident occurs, what incident report form to use. We actually have a form that we're using in, within the departments as well. It's sort of a second form, just to have a second place to have the information, make sure the teacher's aware and make sure that the, you know, occurrence is followed up. There are safety inspection forms, so we have samples here that are used for each class. And students are actually given the information, as are the teachers. And it sort of follows from Rutgers University, they have a Safe Schools Manual and a lot of information is right from there. We go into our courses. The next thing I want to point out is SLE, which are structured learning experiences, because we do have students that work outside of the district, they come to school for half a day and then they work onsite. Here in the district, we have Demond Cowens, who was our high school structured learning experience coordinator. He's able to supervise students on the work site and he does work site visits to make sure that they're safe. And if an incident were to occur, he knows exactly what to do, the forms are here that he would use and it would have to be reported to the state. We have our chemical hygiene plan, because that's also in here for our science courses. We have an example of a fire inspection. And all this information I'm showing you here is required to have in this document. And we also have job safety hazard analysis forms. And I included OSHA's list, but then also further in the plan are some that we use right here in the district. So these are forms that are available online. I know I'm going fast, but I want to show you one from our job site here. Probably have, here's an example of a job safety analysis. Sorry that it's sideways, but we have this for just about every job that takes place here in the district. And then we have emergency plan samples. I put one in here for you to see, for the central office and for the high school. But again, information within the documents would be removed before I send it to the state for, you know, privacy and confidentiality. Here's an example of the PowerPoint I mentioned earlier. And then we have board policies that have to do with safety and health. So that is the plan. It's quite lengthy, but it compiles everything that we need to have in it. It will be sent after it's board-approved to the state for their approval. They send it to Rutgers and then we will be good to go. Okay?
Mr. Charles isn't back. All right, so I just want to thank Ms. Mullen. This was a tremendous amount of work that's been going on all year long. And it is, as we said, it's required for the CTE program. And one of the things that will happen is every year this will be evaluated and determined if changes are needed. But really, thank you, this is just tremendous work. This will be on the next agenda for approval. It'll give you time to look at it, ask any questions you may have to myself or Ms. Mullen. Okay, at this time, Mr. Charles is not available, so we're going to go ahead and have Mr. Santiago come up and do the future-ready presentation. And then we'll go back up to ask questions of Ms. Mullen or Mr. Santiago.
Good evening. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. There's a lot of information coming to the board in next week or so. I've already sent you some information about some of the indicators and the evidence that we need to submit for this specific project. So tonight I'm going to be talking to you about something called the Future Ready Project. It's something that's a national project. It started nationally and it has trickled all the way down to New Jersey for a specific certification that we're going to go through. So the big question is, why do we want to become future-ready? And obviously, technology has revolutionized every single sector, industry, you name it. Education is no different. The future will demand a workforce with different sets of skills. I look at critical thinkers who obviously want to have personalized learning experiences. It's very mobile in terms of their learning. They want to, they're very adept in using different kinds of technologies and they want to use social media, they want to create, replicate, share it. And it will continue. They want to basically have a story of their own and they want to make sure it's known to everybody. And that becomes even, in many ways, a portfolio, right? It's evidence for what they've done in their whole learning experience. There's a huge seismic shift, seismic shift, I should say, in terms of pedagogy, being very student-driven. The classrooms are changing in terms of how they're designed. Historically speaking, we had smartboards as a center of instruction. We have a lot of smartboards in the district, but the shift now is going towards one-to-one Chromebooks. And the question is, if students are working in groups, individual or in small group instruction, how is the teacher going to manage all this stuff? The smartboard is not the tool, because again, it goes back to the teacher, to the middle of the room. So there are a lot of tools that we now have in place, including our web filter, that will, this year, will give teachers the ability to literally turn on their Chromebooks and see every kid's screen and control and give control to the student to project. And we'll talk more about that as part of our future-ready plan. So again, things are changing, the class is very different. Why? It's a big topic, as part of the future-ready framework, is personalization of learning. Anytime, anywhere, customized, different students, we have different learning styles or have different interests, which is really critical. If you have an interest in something and you love it, you're going to have more of a drive for it, right? So it's student-centered learning, as I had mentioned. 21st century skills, deeper learning, more STEM kind of approaches, which we have in our strategic plan. We're talking about college and career readiness, which Ms. Mullen just spoke a little bit about as well. Digital citizenship is a big topic of future-ready. What is it like to be a digital citizenship? And there's different areas that we could cover with that. But looking just now how social media is being used by everyone, including government, and how people behave and communicate through different tools and how should one be acting, I suppose. Technology skills, just general technology skills, it's still important. Critical basic skills that will help you drive instruction at the teacher level and also help students drive to the next level wherever they may want to go. And the big thing here, which is anytime, anywhere learning, is a big component of the future-ready framework. But think about that, anytime, anywhere requires a lot of things. It requires budgeting, planning and a complete redesign of schools. So when you look at the future-ready indicators, if you look at them, please understand that there's low-lying fruit for indicators and there's high-level kind of goals that are not going to be done within a matter of a year or two, it's part of a process. So students being able to make up their own courses and schedules and coming to school perhaps at a different times and learning from under a tree somewhere near a park, that's all possible in the future. It's not there yet, it's not what we see, generally speaking. So high view of the future-ready schools in New Jersey process is, it is a school-level certification program. It is not the district applying for the certification, it is by school. However, a lot of the indicators in the future-ready framework are district-based kind of indicators. It's a partnership with NJIT, NJDOE and New Jersey School Board Association really took over a lot of this stuff. The office of the president coordinating this now is in the school board's office. It is endorsed by all major NJED associations. And we somewhat, New Jersey likes to be different, as we often are. And the national framework doesn't really have a certification process per se. The idea of the national framework is, we just want districts to take a pledge that you want to become future-ready and then start having a conversation. It's about taking a pledge initially and saying, okay, where are we, where do you want to go? to go, how do we get there? And what's low lying fruit and what's not really feasible because of budget? Because as we all know, it's all about economics and budget drives things, right? So New Jersey decided to basically follow a model that we've gone through before, actually, Ms. Mordecai and I actually were part of this sustainability program that we applied for a while back for Liberty Middle School, where they have the green ribbon schools. And it's the same kind of framework, it's based on a certification process. So again, the three questions that were asked and we should all be asking is, as each school is, where are we? Where do, where do we want to be, based on the indicators? And again, how are we going to get there? What is our plan? What is feasible, what is not feasible? So the future ready framework is, is basically broken up into seven gears that address curriculum and instruction and assessment, the use of space and time. So think of physical space and time, how students use the space, scheduling, things of that nature, a robust infrastructure, technology, and data and privacy, community partnerships, which are critical, personalized professional learning, and then budget and resources. So they've basically have taken these seven gears and they made that the national framework. New Jersey did a little bit different. New Jersey created eight gears, if you go back here, around all the seven gears, there is the idea of collaborative leadership. New Jersey said, let's change it a little bit, make our own kind of model, take three themes with all of these gears that we were talking about now and have collaborative leadership, under leadership, a community partnerships, and then budget and resources. Then there's the education and classroom practice, which has curriculum, instruction, and assessment, professional, professional learning, personalized professional learning, and the use of space and time. And the last theme is technology and support services, and we address that under robust infrastructure and we break it down into data and privacy, two specific gears. So the intent of the future ready of New Jersey is to have the national framework revised to then essentially have these indicators be specifically to New Jersey. And they have the school districts and future ready teams ready to review their own practice and look at the indicator and say, where are we, what evidence can we provide that we're actually here? And how do we come up with an action plan to say, we want to go here for these specific indicators? There's a huge collaborative part of this, which is the, within school districts, schools can collaborate amongst each other. Edison, we applied actually this year to get certified, once they are done, they're supposed to collaborate with the other schools about their processes and share information about their experiences. There's also beyond the schools themselves, there's other districts that actually have gone through this process. And we're now putting exemplars in, in a shared open space for other schools to look at and say, oh wow, I love this policy, we don't have this, or I love this SOP, standard operating procedure, I think I'm going to use this. So it becomes a very collaborative piece. And it goes beyond K-12, where other organizations are coming in and providing resources and support, and even perhaps looking at shared services, if you will, there is a lot of opportunity for shared services. And we already started this conversation among my peers, hey, perhaps we can sort of look at pricing and maybe 10 districts can look at one specific product and say, can we negotiate this product? Support, they will provide program and guidance, a lot of information on their website, and they want to connect New Jersey educators who are part of this process and make it sort of a statewide experience. There are a whole bunch of resources on their webpage, which I'll share with you later on, I'll put on the, on our website. But I want to explain to you how the process works in terms of how do schools get certified? So phase number one is, there's a district commitment. We did this way back last fall, superintendent went to the future ready website, signed in and pledged. Then we had a board resolution in November. Now, we could have started the certification process, however, I'm going to explain to you, in the fall, the first time in New Jersey did this, the future ready framework, they gave districts two months to finish it. And the criteria for it was not as high level as we'd want it to be. So what happened was that we sort of said, let's wait for February, because there was going to go through, the actual project was going through revisions. So I'll explain that in a second. So the district-level future ready team was established this spring. We basically went with the district committee that we set up, Mr. Alper was there as a parent representative, Ms. Mordecai was there actually as a board representative, we had a student from the high school, we had to have a library needed specialist, we had different teachers represent, superintendent and his cabinet were there as well to start this process. And then we went to the Edison Committee, which is the actual school applying for certification, and we had teachers, Mr. Fitzgerald was there, Mr. Melanis was there, I was there, and Diana DeCosta was there, who's our technology integration specialist. There is an optional district self-assessment that we just recently did, and we're going to submit that information and get some data from that. And there's a district commitment pre-application that we submitted, saying we're ready to go with the future ready process. As of the end of May, 89 districts have committed. And it's not a large amount, it's 10%. But in some cases, the 89 districts may have five or six schools who did it together, if they had the time for it. Again, this is very, a big challenge, because within two-month timeframe, it's very hard to go through this process. But again, you're beginning that conversation, where are we, where do you want to go, so with the basic certification process, and continue that dialogue and investment and time, resources and other things. The schools themselves, they actually have a team that they established, they signed off a school participation letter, and then they submitted their declaration of participation, and I have all that evidence there, submitted to the website for certification process. There are 240 schools participating right now. Prior to this recent update, there was a big anemic, it was very anemic on the southern part of New Jersey. You would see on the north, northeast side and in places like Vineland, Cape May County, very little participation, this is slowly growing. The university are helping out and school boards has really helped us tremendously in terms of pushing out the idea of becoming future ready certified. So the school, the phase three, which is school certification process, the team develops an action plan for certification. After they looked at where are we, where do we want to go, what indicators do we focus on, and then they create a basic action plan. And we at the district level are also including those action plans, because not everything is done at the school level. And then we will basically implement those actions, submit evidence of success, and continue this process throughout. I don't want to read this, everything to you, but basically, this whole application process ends June 30th. And it's really critical to look at, they, they really wanted this to be based on schools to apply, because the schools should be the ones driving sort of the ideas, because they know, obviously, often what you'll often see is like a district with 12, 13, 14 schools like our own. Sometimes what they were saying is, we want each school to go and have conversations about their own practice. They have conversations with administrators and communicate on a regular basis, saying, okay, how is our school different than maybe the other school on the other side of town? Because they are different, the cultures sometimes are different, that's okay. Maybe sometimes we assume everyone is congruent with practice, and maybe that's not the case. These things help us in terms of aligning practice and also looking at resources. One of the things that comes into this future ready component is that when you look at budgeting, the way that the statute now is set up for budgeting, everything has to be broken down very clearly by school. So for that indicator, it was so easy, how are schools balanced in terms of receiving funding? Well, now it's easy, because we have to split everything, even with technology supplies, by school, with everything that we buy. So if I buy K-12 software for the whole district, we split it up evenly based on the population of students. So what you're going to see out of this is a lot more transparency. The school performance report card that comes out next year will have a lot more stuff about technology and budget and bandwidth allocation by school and average it out by individual. That's pretty powerful in terms of communicating with the community as part of those indicators and sharing what we do on a regular basis. So in terms of actual certified schools, only 63 were certified last year. A lot more will be certified in June. So I really want to explain this process, because the 2017 program started out with a lot of indicators and there was, the rigor, it really wasn't there. So I was a member of the task force and we met in November to review all these indicators and try to make some modifications. And we wanted to have more greater collaboration, they're going to have network site visits. And in the end, after all these conversations, we looked at all the indicators, said, wait a second, way too many indicators, a lot of these things cross over, some redundancy, we went from 102 to 48 indicators in total for certification. This is why we didn't pursue the certification process after November, because I kind of, kind of already knew that we had to go through this revision process, which we started in November. So I went to NJIT with my cohort, my group, and I was actually a co-chair of the data and privacy group committee. We looked at indicators, everybody did their work, it took a few months, we reviewed every indicator, every rubric, every descriptor, aligned it and said, whoa, way too much stuff here, let's simplify the process. We're still going through these revisions, so this summer, we're going to be looking at all the indicators and basically saying, okay, how do we continue to condense this where necessary? The future ready process, the cycle started February 22nd. So again, at the end of the fall certification process, we went through these revisions, we waited till February 22nd, and then eventually, school boards said, we're releasing the official, you know, revised lesson indicators, February 22nd. And then I'd say, three, four weeks later, we actually started this process here in West Orange. So given that timeline, it was a very short period for us to actually get certified. So we had to literally start in March when Park was starting, and the teachers were amazing, they knew there was a lot of stuff going on and different schedules. So we said, look, let's just be patient, do the best you can, and they were awesome, they really did their best and, and really helped out. So now we're actually submitting all the evidence, there are documents that we're submitting to the board for board approval. One of them is a data and privacy policy, that is a very specific indicator we want to meet. And that just talks about how we want to ensure that all the data in the district is secure and people in general follow practice and protocols for protecting that data. There's also an action plan that literally talks about what we're doing with future ready and all the indicators that are being addressed by us, that we think are really priority indicators. I'll give you one, for example. Data governance is one that we think is really important. So the data privacy policy we have in place, it simply says, let's get a policy in place that says, this is how we're going to do data governance. That was, by the way, the biggest conversation my colleague and I had when we reviewed all these indicators, there were no priority indicators. So we said, wait a second, you have to have priority indicators, without a policy, you can't begin anything. So we actually had districts submitted things, but no policy. And we thought to ourselves, how is it possible to submit evidence of things being accomplished, yet having no policy? So what you're going to see, that's going to come up for first reading, I believe, on the 18th, is the actual policy, it's about 14, 15 pages after it was all said and done, that talks about how are we going to protect district data? And in a quick, short summary is, we looked at every single software application in the district and we categorized it based on the type of data elements that are in it. So there's open public data or systems, no issue, there's internal systems with certain internal data, and there's confidential systems, like health systems, personnel systems, and we said, that's confidential. And then we identified the data stewards who are responsible for maintaining that, those systems, and simply said, okay, now we train you on how to protect our district data. We also have a couple of things in place that, two-factor authentication is a really important thing, especially for people who access confidential systems. So it's always a challenge to have people, hey, you have to use your cellphone to get a second password to basically log into your email account. We've put in the budget last November, a system called Okta, O-K-T-A dot com is the website. And basically, it's a portal that we create, it's an enterprise solution. And literally, if you are one of those individuals that's identified as having access to a confidential system, you have to go through this portal and authenticate that way. So part of this process, again, we're going to submit all the evidence by June 30th, I'm actually on the review committee as part of this task force, we're going to start having conversation in two weeks about reviewing information from other districts that submitted their data, and we'll go through the certification process. By September, West Orange, Edison will receive a notification, which I am very optimistic will be that will be certified. And then we'll continue with that process and see if other schools want to participate. And we will then be at the bronze certification level. So there are three certification levels, one is the entry level, which is where we want to be at. We've established a baseline, we focus on school assessment. And then after we get the bronze certification, we wait till, they usually recommend we wait for a few cycles to go for that silver certification, looking at all the indicators and continue to grow on that. So this is what we're going to submit as part of the certification process checklist, the district commitment confirmation, all the notifications, I told you that we put together documentation, the school participation documents. Then we have for the bronze level certification, there is a school narrative that Edison did, is a two-page narrative, that's included in the action plan that I shared with you that will be going for board approval. There's a school video that they are going to create, that will be submitted as part of this, to be on the website. And there's going to be a total of 140 points that must be submitted in the tracking sheet. And for each of the themes, there are 45 points that must be submitted for the leadership theme, there are 40 points that must be submitted for education classroom practice, and there are 40 points that need to be submitted for support, technology support services. There are priority indicators. As part of this conversation we had back in November, we said, you need to have priority indicators. Again, for the data privacy security area, if you don't have policy, you can't get certified. So you create a policy to make sure that that's where you begin, with clear policy in the district and then procedural regulation, things you put in place. This is what the future ready schools for the Edison Middle School decided to put together as a, as a brief overview of their experience. Again, I want to commend them, because it's a very short timeframe, they had to be pulled out of the classrooms and... So they pretty much asked why? Why future ready? And again, changes have revolutionized almost every industry across the world, education is no different. Inundated with a relentless barrage of technology innovations, the world demands a different set of skills in order for individuals to be successful citizens, and schools must adjust the way they choose to prepare students. Edison seeks to develop pedagogy that is student-driven, celebrates 21st century values and integrates technology meaningfully. Who? These are the individuals, these are the teachers. And this is what they've done, they focused on the education and classroom practice component, the theme I mentioned before. It is an ongoing process, it's necessary discussion that needs to take place on a regular basis now, and it's fluid and a flexible process. They did a pre-assessment, identified current situation, they gathered evidence in the form of artifacts to demonstrate current situations, that say, hey, this, this indicator, here's all the evidence that you need to say that we're doing this. And then they wrote a narrative and explained their school's strengths and weaknesses, and here they are. That is their summary. Shrink's district virtual identity, we have a great virtual identity, that's one of the indicators for leadership. Does your district have a branding strategy in place? Do you use social media? And Perry Bashkov, by the way, has been amazing in terms of doing stuff for our website. We won a third place award, so we actually submitted that, we are top scorer there with respect to district virtual identity. Communicating and celebrating 21st century learning, we have all communication channels open, we do a lot of communication through social media, our website, and also professional learning networks and the teachers participating in. Digital assessment is one that's very good, we use NWEA map and other tools that we submit as part of evidence, but teachers use Google services as another way to assess students on a regular basis. Digital learning tools and content, we have a lot of tools that students have access to, so we submitted a list of all the software and resources that the district provides, that will certainly suffice. Digital citizenship, teachers submitted evidence, examples of lesson plans that they do in the classroom at Edison that supports this specific indicator. Computer science, Edison was perfect, every single student must take coding, we said, here's the syllabus, 100% of all the students go through it, we met this indicator. Now, looking at the future, as other schools look to get future ready certified, and they look at this indicator and say, hey, we may or may not have a comprehensive program, but we begin that conversation there, how do we evolve to the next level? And by the way, the grant that we received two years ago for coding at the two schools, Washington and Hazel, is a perfect example of how we received funds through this innovative grant to promote coding through code.org. Flexible instruction process and an internet connection and servers. So we basically have a good connection in our district, it's going to be tripled, by the way, starting July 1st or next to the summer, we're going to go from one gig to three gigs, so our capacity will improve significantly. And then the challenges, for the teachers, not a lot of time. They, again, we started, we were given two months to get this in place. So it does not accurately represent all disciplines due to time constraints, so they were being pulled out of the classroom, we met, but many of the teachers they wanted to meet with on a regular basis, they did not participate as much as possible. Missing instructional time at critical points in the year, teachers said, listen, we missed some really important teaching time, so maybe next year, we could have a little bit of longer process. We, by the way, I just communicated with, with the coordinator, this, I said, I thought, I think the best option for the future ready process this year is to make it a one-year cycle. Because to have a school district start this process in September, October, they have to submit by January, it's not really realistic to get really good products. So have the process start in September and submit the data by June, it just makes more sense. And hopefully, we'll have those conversations as well. Areas of growth, authentic learning, which we have to first define, what is authentic learning? We have some definition of it, it's in our future ready plan here, in the strategic plan as well, but define it. Student-driven, self-directed learning, that's the focus, to continue on that specific That's a focus to continue on that specific task. Personal learning network. So this applies to both students and teachers. But how do we use personal learning networks, social media, to then elevate ourselves professionally by connecting with peers who are doing some really interesting stuff? And we've been doing a lot of stuff with K-5. Diane DeCoste has been working with the K-5 teachers. And we're going to expand this from six to 12. Ongoing reflection and refinement, that is a future-ready process. And then student access to technology is an area of growth. And we're looking at specifically in terms of beyond the school day. So one of the indicators that we have in the future-ready action plan is, how do we provide students with, who may not have internet access at home or limited with those resources after they leave school during the day? And one of the indicators that we say we give ourselves a passing for, just said, your school provides connectivity and one-to-one to your students, but it also gives at least two additional resources in the community for students to connect. And we said, we have the library and the community center. So we're able to meet that kind of evidence at submission. But the objective for us to go to the next level, to the final stage of like excelling is to have now communication with the community and go talk to business owners and simply saying, do you provide free Wi-Fi? If so, would you mind if we put this as a list of places that students can go to after school if they cannot connect to the internet from home? We're also looking at different providers of internet services like Verizon and Comcast to see what they can offer just to give out as informational things. There's a product called Kajee, K-A-J-E-E-T. They actually provide mobile learning, like a MiFi kind of jetpack for students that you pay monthly. But if that is a feasible thing, we will look at and say, okay, these students, because they qualify for one reason or another, cannot afford or don't have internet access, and we will provide those services for them. So this action plan, when you see it, we'll start out with a survey to the parents, simply saying, we just want to get feedback from you at home, what do you have access to? Here's an example of how we submit the evidence. So for the leadership one, district virtual identity, there's a description and there's a link to the evidence folder and all the information is there. And then we also have the district assessment. We're simply saying at the district level, we have performance matters, performance matters, unify, NWA map. We do a lot of extensive assessment with throughout benchmark assessments. And then we give examples where this is also being done at Edison Middle School. And then we have an example of how we basically got nine out of nine in terms of readiness for technology, network, and devices through, for Park. So there's a system called NJ Trax run by the NJ DOE where we submit all the things that we have. They look at it and say, okay, you're actually ready. You've passed your nine out of nine. So again, there's going to be a lot of evidence that gets submitted. One last example of this is looking at network security. We pretty much put everything in place where we have our brand-new firewall that was installed by a third-party. Security engineers came in, installed our firewall, configured everything. Then we have something else that, believe it or not, none of my colleagues have. It's actually through AIG, our insurance company. We have cybersecurity insurance and they said, we're going to give you an appliance that you're going to put between your firewall and your ISP that literally blocks things from Russia and Poland and things like that and literally protects you. On top of that, we have a web filter called Lightspeed that literally filters all the content that students cannot see, like inappropriate images, things like that. But it also filters malicious code and hardware that students may try to get access to. And last but not least, we use Google. And Google is pretty much doing all the work for us in terms of protecting our emails with spam and anti-phishing. So we said, we're good with security at the top level. Our action plan for this year, a big focus on, in addition to data governance, is going to be staff awareness and educating how to protect yourselves and your students. And one of the things we're bringing in is something called FishMe where just, it's not a punitive thing. It's basically we're going to send out these notifications, like fake FishMe notifications. If you click on it, it'll say, hey, by the way, this typically could have been a really malicious kind of phishing kind of thing. Look at it, go to tutorial, it gives you the description of what a phishing email might look like. The problem is that Google is blocking so much stuff out. Got a whitelist and say, please don't block this stuff out. So the other thing, just so you know, we're bringing in something called Gaggle this year for grades, students in grades six to 12. It's full monitoring by third-party, by people who are literally monitoring our systems. So every time a student puts inappropriate words, even something like suicidal tendencies, they'll be flagged through artificial intelligence. And if there's an urgent need, like it's an emergency, they'll literally call the police or the superintendent or myself or someone we designate and say, hey, by the way, this communication is really kind of something we should have to look at. If it's something related to bullying, key words will pop up and they'll say, hey, ask per board, a board policy, you're not supposed to be doing this. There could be different levels of warning. One could be right to the principal or the teacher. And we can also block out specific files that may be malicious on our network. So it's, there's so many layers of security that we have to worry about. But the primary one is going to be the end user. We want to focus on staff awareness about how to protect end users to be able to be safe at home and beyond. So that pretty much leaves me with this one last slide. It is all about the journey. That is the intent of the future ready framework. Yes, New Jersey made a certification out of it. This really is about conversation. Where are we? Where do we want to go? How do we get there? Can we get there in a year? No. Why? Money? Could be different reasons. But we plan out a roadmap and we go with it. And again, I just want to thank the Edison group because they were fantastic with this process and a lot of work. Any questions?
Okay. Well, Ms. Mullin, Mr. Santiago, thank you very much for in-depth presentations. I'd like to take questions from the board on, first with the occupational safe and health, and health program. We'll start with, this time, we'll start with Mr. Schwartzbaum.
Thank you for putting together. Couple of questions. One is the dissemination of the plan to various staff members. Has that been done?
Once it's approved by the board, it will be shared and the state.
So how much of a change is it from the current plan? Do we have any plan in place currently?
A lot of the, most of the components in the plan are in place. This is just compiling it into one location. So the staff is aware of just about everything in the plan. It's just really compiling it in one location for the state.
And lastly, what's our experience incidence rate in hazard? Have we had many incidences?
No, we have not.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Thank God.
All right, next, Mr. Alper.
I do not think you, though. That was immense. It was a lot of work.
Well, I had a great committee helping me pull it together.
Ms. Mordecai.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Mullin, for all your hard work on this. I am looking forward to going through all 400 pages very thoroughly. And I'm glad that this will be on the next agenda, so we have ample time to really go through it in depth. And yes, knock on wood, we have not had any incidences. So thank you again.
You're welcome.
I have no questions, just congratulations. I'm completely blown away. That was a massive volume of well-organized work and I look forward to wading through lots of it. It's going to be fun, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Ms. Mullin, thank you.
We're good. Okay, thank you very much.
If you can just stay, okay, for a public comment? Thanks. Phil, can you come up to the mic, please?
Okay. This time, first, I want to thank Mr. Alper and Ms. Mordecai for participating in the future-ready effort. And we're going to start off with Mr. Alper with questions.
I really don't, since I've been there for all of this. Maybe if you could expand a little bit on Kajee and things like that and how important that is to the entire process.
Yeah, so Kajee, you think about, is your MiFi jetpack and it's, you have a certain service, up to a certain amount of bandwidth a lot per month. And each student that would qualify, we'd have to pay for it. But there's a specific price to it. I actually called and asked about different rates depending on the number of students that we needed for. So I can get you pricing, what it's going to look like in terms of for 100, 500, 1,000, what that will look like. But again, it's a company that gives you, we can actually, in some schools, what they do is they actually have it in libraries and students can check it out for Wi-Fi and they can just, you know, use it. But it has limited bandwidth, you know, data that can be transferred for a month. So it's very limited. It's not like you go and obviously watch YouTube all day because that would be a problem. But if you use just Google services, that's a good tool for students who may not have those resources.
Okay, great.
Ms. Mordecai.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Santiago, for all your hard work. And thank you to the entire committee that worked on this. In particular, I do want to thank our student representative who was on this committee with us, Alina Sanchez. So shout out to her. It's tough to sit in a room with all these adults. And she was a trooper and she really brought a lot of feedback from the high school to us. Just want to say, I know we talked earlier, emails back and forth about the mobile hotspots. We've been talking for some time about making sure that mobile hotspots are available to all our students in district who don't have internet access at home. And I did reach out to Bloomfield Public Schools who has a plan in place. So hopefully, you'll coordinate with them and so we won't have to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, by the way, that plan is, was based on a small grant they received. I'm not sure how effective it is now, but it's similar to Kajee. I'll give you all those resources. I will say that we've been looking at this for about seven years and looking at how can we expand our network beyond the school zone? And we looked at, can we possibly put access points in Washington School near the police substation or those things? And we've had these conversations, I think it's one we have to sort of continue to have. At one point, the Obama administration was trying to push more of this through the FCC and E-rate application. It's not an easy thing to do, but obviously, I do have colleagues of mine that are trying this and they're giving us some insight as how we might be able to achieve this goal. I know that years ago, oh, 10 years ago, actually, when my predecessor was here, we had our fiber network. We have our own fiber. We own our own fiber. We manage our own fiber, basically. And at the time, when we ran this, this pretty, you know, extensive project, the town was going to come in and invest in that as well. They never did. So maybe at some point, if the town wanted to join back into our fiber network, we could talk again about expanding those connections and resources. And that might be something we could sort of start having a conversation about, short-term. I think it'd be a great idea to have.
Okay. Yeah, I also reached out to Mrs. Casalino because we've been talking about it when she was on the board.
Right.
And now that she's on the council, I also reached out to her to try to coordinate with the West Orange Chamber of Commerce to see if local businesses, you know, have some kind of a free guest Wi-Fi available so that our students can tap in.
Right.
So thank you for that.
Excellent point.
I have nothing further.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Ms. Schwartzbaum.
Thank you for getting us to this point. It's really, it's great. A couple of questions. Do we have a plan in place if we are hacked as far as what sys-
Standard operating procedures, in terms of like, what do we do next?
Yeah, SWAT, the SWAT team.
Right. So we suggest to follow those steps, like if it's on a specific computer, we isolate the computer. If it's something deeper than that, we will follow and call the right parties involved. And something actually, I went, the FBI was really instrumental in terms of looking at, as a resource, if we need immediate contacts, we just call the FBI and the police department as well here locally. But I think the FBI has given a whole bunch of resource for us in terms of protocols to follow. So we identify something and we just target it and isolate it, contain it, and then try to find what we need to do. I'll give you one brief example of an SOP that we put in place that we use for our student information system now. Every morning at 7:30 in the morning, our SIS person goes in and logs, looks at logins between 12:00, midnight, and 6:00 AM. Actually, we want to see if there's any activity. Why? Because typically, if you're looking at patterns of people want to do malicious things, if they hack into your email account, they're not going to do it during working hours for the most part. So they're going to say, is there any activity during our sleep hours? And if so, that's one way we can actually proactively do something without having really expensive software to manage and protect. And there's things out there like something called Cisco ICE, for example, we'd love to have, but it's not cheap. It's a great tool to protect our network. But again, it's that higher fruit we want to reach towards based on budgeting. But we do have, we have those things in place. By the way, one of the things we're submitting to the future-ready evidence piece is a list of SOPs that are very specific in terms of what do we do, including recycling, by the way. We have all recycling piece. We have an inventory management system, but what do we do when that leaves? We have a process where you always approve, as you know. And we have everything serialized. Someone comes in, certifies the recycle properly. So the answer in short is yes.
Okay. And lastly, just in regard to hotspots, as far as using cellphones for personal hotspots.
Yeah. Tethering is, yeah.
You know, the tethering and everything with that to, first, we'll teach. And the other thing is to reach out to some of the carriers and to see whether, for specific students, we can get additional bandwidth for them, data usage at no cost, which many of the carriers would be willing to do it.
That's fine. My only concern, and I guess I would have the attorneys to look at this, is would it be okay for us to communicate and try to have a specific vendor work with us and not really make it every vendor? I just need some guidance and respect that I, I think, looking at, tethering is a good example. One of the challenges, sort of on the topic, is going to be that as we want to have learning anywhere and a BYOB kind of framework in the future perhaps, there are students coming in right now with their own data plans. And they're like, I don't really want to use your data in your network. I'm like, well, the policy says you have to because there's a reason why you're using our data network. We're filtering content because we're being compliant. So a student who comes in with a cellphone, considering, say, I'm going to tap into my cellphone now and go anywhere I want. Well, no, you're not supposed to do that because where you might go is probably stuff we would filter. So there is a challenge we have right now for the next three, four years in terms of looking, how do we see the landscape in terms of giving students access in an educational setting and beyond while still conforming to those mandatory things that we have to follow? But yeah, if someone gave me some guidance in terms of how do we communicate to vendors without being preferential or sort of-
So we may need different policies for what I'll call in-school versus out-of-school. In-school utilizing only our network, but when we're talking about when students go home, if they're-
No, no. I'm talking about specifically, if a student brings their own laptop, right, and they tap into their own personal cellphone, they're going on the internet now, we can't monitor that.
Right.
Unless they log into our services like Google. But again, so if a student goes to an inappropriate website and someone says, how could you allow this? Well, it's not even our network. We could control our network, we can't control other people's network. So again, that becomes a policy and a challenge. If we allow everyone to bring their own personal network, it changes the landscape of how we do business in a sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. It was very, it was in-depth and I'm glad we've begun this journey, as you refer to the journey. Edison really was the perfect model to look at. But in looking at Edison, it also kind of exposed where we need to grow in so many other areas. Because the original idea was, okay, we have code available here, we have engineering available here, beginning there, some engineering principles. Now we have to expand up and expand down. And there are, there are curricula and software available to teach code from pre-K, not only code.org, but, you know, from, there's Snatch and-
Scratch.
Scratch. What is Scratch and Snap? Actually, Snap is related to the, some robotic stuff that's available. So I'm hoping that we're taking a look at how we can, how we can do that.
Which, by the way, is in the strategic plan. So there is a STEM initiative there that we'll, there's, yeah.
Good, good. Good, good. And also, I don't know if it'll get us additional brownie points in, as we submit, but we do plan on, not that you don't already have a great security system in place, but we, the security, as part of our security audit, we're going to include cybersecurity. So maybe that'll introduce an opportunity to revisit Cisco ICE and how we can get that to support.
That would be great, because actually, if they make the recommendation, and there's money associated with it, and you like the idea, I'd love to have that. As a matter of fact, I will say this, we do have already in schedule and place, after we did our firewall installation, we have everything configured by a third-party security expert, we have regular meetings with them now, and we have already a free appliance coming our way to basically monitor our system from a third-party company. So if you want, at least for that specific piece, to save the money, why pay for somebody to do that piece of it? Because we already have it done for free. They'll give you the report, and simply say, hey, we put an appliance on your system, we're monitoring it, it's free. Now, mind you, they often will do this because they eventually want to come in and become consultants, because there's a sort of a bit of a draw to get some revenue, for lack of better words, right? But if we get a free sort of assessment by a third party, like Palo Alto or CDW, which is a vendor we use, and are great organizations, I would highly recommend we take advantage of that. It's already scheduled, so that's fine.
Yep.
Okay. And just more of a comment, I think from a curriculum and instruction standpoint and technology infusion standpoint, there's still many opportunities, actually, K through 12, that I'd like to really see us go a bit deeper in. One is, you know, the use of free templates for developing a website. So instead of a report, maybe it's a simple, you know, five-page website, using one of the free templates that's out there, and giving kids another way to express both their creativity as well as their analytical knowledge. And also looking at, at the high school level, I mean, I've talked to a lot of students who have graduated, wanted to pursue graphic arts and communications, but while we teach, while we have a full array of computer science languages, we don't teach HTML5. We don't teach WordPress. We don't teach the languages used to develop websites. And then the last is, looking at Microsoft Office. When we went to Chromebooks, Chromebooks are inexpensive way, and granted, everything's, pretty much everything nowadays is browser-based, but still, somehow in the process, the idea of teaching Microsoft Office, because, you know, colleges are using Excel more than they're using Google Classroom, teaching the Microsoft Office products has kind of fallen by the wayside.
No, by the way, we do that pretty well, actually. Nancy Bellin's Department covers that extensively, from middle school all the way to high school. So the students go through that formal office certification piece.
Right, but that's a percentage of our students. I already know our business department and CTE does a phenomenal job with that, but it's not necessarily filtering down to all the other students who will need access to that skill. So these are just things to think about as we're looking at future-ready. Let me turn it back over to Mr. Ruski to finish the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Mr. Santiago.
Thanks again, Mr. Santiago.
If you can just wait for us with the public, I mean, yeah, you can relax there. Okay, just a quick update, graduation requirements presentation, we're going to table this. We're going to wait for the next board meeting. We want to get just a little more data that'll allow us to clarify some things as far as comparison to other school districts around us, and, but we need some additional data. So we're just going to hang on to that till the next meeting. Next is the HIB report, which I'll hand out to you. Any questions on the report? Okay. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to entertain questions from the public on agenda items, and that includes the presentations that we've had for ESL, Occupational Safety and Health, and Future Ready. Lauren, which one? Okay, got it, because somebody's got to answer on that end. Right, right, right. Please state your name and address, please.
Susan Maccabee, Two Mountain Way. I just have one request. When, if, if you move these kids to Gregory, could you please help the PTA by giving us some resources for transferring, translating some of our documents? I'm going to be off the PTA at the end of June, but I know this year, we've been struggling to try and figure out how to contact some of the parents who might speak a different language. And so the board, the PTA board is really interested in welcoming whoever is at our school, for whatever reason they're at our school, but we don't always have the resources to be able to contact them. And so if you give us some tools, we would like to welcome whoever's there. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, how are you? My name is Chanel Rodriguez Johnson. I'm a parent at Washington, and my address is 21 Park Drive South. Well, I just wanted to make a couple comments on the ESL situation. She brought up a few points, and I just had a couple questions, and just kind of had a little bit of an input. So she said that it took five to seven years to learn her language, but how are we able to do this in only 90 minutes? And she said that students are not receiving even 90 minutes. So I understand the initiative to try and give them more, but in five to seven years, that 90 minutes is not going to make even a piece of an impact. Again, my maiden last name is Rodriguez, so I came, I am an ELL. Also, I agree with her when she said that she wanted to have a content-rich, academically rigorous education. However, if they're fully immersed in an English classroom, where they don't understand what's going on, there's no way there's going to be content-rich or rigorous. Like, unfortunately, how are we meeting the needs of our deaf students? How are we meeting the needs of our kids who are, you know, cognitively impaired? We are not speaking their language, so what services are we giving them that we're not giving our ELLs? I was basically saying, thinking too, that they're at a disadvantage, even if their teachers are ESL-trained. Just understanding, as a teacher, or former teacher, at this point, as, you know, myself, you know, we have to meet the needs of kids who are, you know, underperforming in reading, underperforming in math, underperforming in all the, all the pedag- pedag- sorry, all the content areas. And unfortunately, giving teachers, you know, this one more hat to wear, unfortunately, I feel as though our ELLs are really going to slip through the cracks at this point. Also, looking at that, how, you know, like, why Washington, specifically? Like, I particularly enjoy my child's academic experience at Washington, but why Washington and Gregory? If there's already issues with putting kids in trailers, by moving those ELLs to that particular school, aren't we pretty much exacerbating the problem of having kids in trailers? In addition, Washington is very old and very small, you know, with the population that we have, and putting, you know, you're putting more strain on the resources there. Also, just talking about professional development, profession, giving teachers three days professional development, I know that's kind of a work in progress, but again, meeting the needs of students who have, who are ELLs, we are not going to be able to meet their needs within three days of training. It really takes a person who really has a love for teaching English-language learners and fully understands not just the educational impacts, but the societal impacts, too. And the last thing that I just kind of wanted to, you know, put out there is that, why not, instead of having them fully immersed in an English classroom, fully immersed in a Spanish-speaking or Creole-speaking classroom, and then 90 minutes, give them a math class, which is basically where the language skills are very low, whereas basically, you learn by doing and, you know, manipulating, so that they don't have to worry about that language barrier, because math is kind of a universal language, and then slowly integrating them into the, into the fold of English language. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Cindy Matu Brown, 24, Coralwell Circle. I wanted to actually address two concerns that I had. The first being, I am an educator, and we do fully immerse our students. Even in students that are coming from India or Japan, we've had from fifth to sixth grade and not a lick of English, and they are fully immersed in all their classes, and within three months, they sound like little English-speaking parrots. I think it's very important to have them immersed. My first language is Spanish. Even though I was born here, I went to ESL classes when I was in grammar school. The problem is, and I still experience this today, is that when I am around my family, I speak Spanish. My first and most comfortable language is my first language. So I've had students that come from outside our district, who have been in ESL classes, from kindergarten to the sixth grade, and don't speak English. Perhaps it's the program, perhaps it's the teachers in the building, but it's very comfortable for them to fall back into their first language. So that's a concern. I'm a huge supporter of immersion. I think it works best. And my other comment is to the board. I know that recently, we all kind of came together as a community and said, we're going to work together, we're going to pull together, and we're going to really make an effort to listen to the community, to work together, and be productive in a united effort. I attended the Hispanic Heritage meeting the other night, and I was very disappointed when one of our parents stood up to speak and was shut down by not just Rodolfo Rodriguez, who is our deputy mayor, but also Mr. Mendez echoed his comments. Regardless of your opinion, he is a parent. He has the right to speak on behalf of his children, has two children in the district, and whether or not you like his position, accusing him of grandstanding for politics is shameful. And I need to express that, because a member of this organization, a representative of this Board of Education, or this school system, should never make a parent feel unwelcome when they are advocating for their students or any other students. Thank you.
Alice Ron, 66, Mitchell Street. We need to understand the meaning of open and clear communication doesn't happen unto the opinion, unto the opinion of others is taken into consideration. This didn't happen at the Spanish presentation, which was life-threatening to me. It is important Mendez understands very well that she can't refer to us as those opposed. Her program have all their interests and our politics. Often, she said during the whole presentation, she doesn't care about the cost or anything else, because she only cares about our children. Those opposing are included, me included, sorry, are not due to the agendas of politics, because we don't care for our children. We oppose because she forgot important points to such, for example. One, no one cares for our children more than us, parents and our children, teachers, taxpayers that pay for the education in West Orange. We are not those opposed, we are stakeholders. Her second, her lack of disseminate properly the information and getting the input of parents, teachers, because a school home is partnership, and there requires to treat the parents of this relationship with equity. Third, her lack of presenting real fat data to prove the instructional benefit behind her program, the pros and cons in regards impact, including instructional, emotional, and financially. In other words, we oppose not to, we oppose due to her lack of knowing how to sell the product to us, the stakeholders, plain marketing. She presented, but she can sell it, she cannot sell the deal. She says she doesn't care about the cost, it is clear, because if the kids need to be bossed, for example, to will have to be, that will have to call that a necessity. But she said the student after mastering can choose to stay. That as much as I would agree with that, because I don't want more transition, for those kids, that become to be the necessity, become to be an elective cost. I still looking to understand why the program that was approved last year cannot be improved that is best practice and benchmarking is about. Why a new one? Why should it include just play a student and segregate them in other location due to the natural native language? She told a parent that only from 157, 15 students have the imperative need. That means 9.5%, there's nothing. She indicated a whole month, she will be meeting with parents and all the schooling teachers before goes to vote. I would like to know if she will be, it will be a record of that input to us to see, because she said that we spoke to 12 parents, so if it's one, only 12 parents, that's 7.6% of the affected community. How can we teach our children to ignore the difference and instead embrace them, when their friend will be displayed, displayed for speaking other language? What is the point to teach Mandarin, Italian, Spanish, as we do in other classrooms-
Thank you very much.
-without a dual of a lingual teaching? Those programs doesn't work. Tell me how it doesn't work.
Thank you, Ms. very much, to Mr. Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
How are you? I'm going to read, because then I can hopefully-
Excuse me, please. State your name and your address, please.
Sure. Perla Monjuicas, 59 Winding Way, West Orange.
Yes.
So before I read, I'm going to say that I did come here as a native foreign language Spanish speaker, and I was immersed, and I came at seven, and I think in English. And I'm, I, so I still speak Spanish, and I'm fluent, but I was immersed, and anyway. So I'm here because I'm concerned by the fact that, twice now, in a year's time, we're proposing to move children out of their neighborhood schools because they have a challenge. So I'm concerned about that. I don't like that trend. It's basically, okay, so to, I understand you have to weigh multiple different factors. I imagine it's complicated. However, the way the board carried out last year's LLD move was appalling. I feel, to me, as a child who has special needs, who isn't in an inclusion classroom and was not affected, but I am a special needs parent, it feels as if the board does not understand that this is your most vulnerable student population. These are children who experience more anxiety. These are parents who are experiencing more anxiety, a lot more demands, day to day. And for you to inform them before school's going to start, two weeks, is, I don't know, it's disgusting. I don't understand why we're again proposing a change at the end of the year, this kind of a change. Why aren't we having these conversations in January, at least? I don't understand. Is it because you're waiting for summer recess, and for people to go on vacation, and for you to again inform them two weeks before school starts? I, I'm asking you to consider the invaluable benefits of students attending their neighborhood schools. My child, he was recommended to attend an LLD classroom, starting from kindergarten, and I challenged, and I said I would like for him to start in a general ed inclusion classroom, and that's where he still is today, in third grade, and doing very well. He would not have accepted to go to a different school from his two brothers. He is very much motivated, as are many kids, by their older brother, by their peers, by the kids that they see riding the bike down in their neighborhood. They want to do, be the same as everybody else. Same goes for foreign language speakers. Okay?
Thank you.
So there are many benefits, and I ask that, we're not a magnet school. We're not a magnet school-
Mrs. Rodriguez.
-for all students, but only for students who are challenged. We can't have it both ways.
Mrs. Rodriguez.
We can't be a neighborhood district and a magnet school district-
Mrs. Rodriguez.
-for our challenged students.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Can't have it both ways.
Thank you so much. All right. Okay.
Good evening. Robyn Isurlo, 22, Yale Terrace. Let me begin by saying that I take great offense at the insinuation of the Assistant Superintendent in her opening remarks, that an objection to this proposal is akin to a call for a regressive racist ESL policy. In a time when infants and children are being separated from their undocumented parents by our government, when others who are vulnerable are living in constant fear of our government, is it really the right time to remove our youngest English-language learners from their neighborhood public schools, where they should feel safe and a part of a larger community? I have stood up here so many times to share with you what I hear from others from around the district, who do not feel that they can speak honestly. Teachers who are presented with major changes after the decision has been made, and with an urgency that just doesn't make sense. So the concerns about professional development and space that the Assistant Superintendent heard from the teachers, well, these are safe issues. These don't ruffle any feathers. These don't often cause any reprimand. In fact, the questions that she shared only speak to a group of professionals who were left out of the process from the beginning. Last month, two teachers stood before you and asked some really important imaginative questions about this proposal. Can you imagine what a room, or even an auditorium, full of classroom educators, who feel invited and comfortable to do so, what they could come up with? The process, yes, would take longer, but our schools and our children would be better for it. I'm curious about the graduation rate that was mentioned, 76% of our ELL students who don't graduate. I'm curious how many of those students spent their entire educational career in the West Orange Public Schools, versus how many of them moved to the district halfway through? In fact, so many of the measures that were mentioned as a rationale for going to this proposal seem to be about performance at the high school level. So again, I'm rather curious why this major change at the elementary level. I would like to ask the board to consider that they put a moratorium on any proposed changes, so that we could do a lot of work, a lot of the work that was mentioned tonight, until the academic year of 2019, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeremiah Salinas, 7, Crystal Ave. I've been to three of these meetings already, where we're discussing the ESL proposed changes, but I haven't seen that one parent that's been part of that process come up to the microphone and discuss why are some of the reasons why they want this. I was the parent over at the Hispanic Association meeting. I was just sharing information, because part of the presentation that I think should have been discussed with the parents there was the fact that it was proposed for a vote to begin with. But the presentation was given as, this is an initiative that we want to discuss with you guys here first, before we bring it up to the board, so that we get all the information going, and make sure that we have everybody's input. going, and make sure that we have everybody's input. But that's not the truth, right? Half-truth is a lie. So you lied to the parents, okay? Because you didn't, it wasn't presented like that. So you can't see me here, and look at me, and shake your hand at me, and, and tell me that, that's not a lie. So it was presented for a vote, you guys shut it down, thank you for that, but, it was presented for a vote. We live in a town that, when you drive around, and you're coming in, it has these little nice signs that says, "West Orange is a stigma-free town," correct? Stigma brings experiences and feelings of shame, embarrassment, distress, hopelessness, and reluctance to seek or accept any help. Well, when we're trying to get rid of labels in our school district, and in our classrooms, we're trying to stick labels in our school district and in our classrooms, but not by the teachers or the administrators at the building, but by central administration and you guys that are here. So I would ask kindly, as I always have, very respectfully, that you please just seek for ways to improve the program at the schools where the children are at already. You spoke about $300,000, that what it would cost, right? This is not how much money you guys save, you save this year in the budget? Correct? Because you only increased it by 1.67%, I think that, that's, that's what that was? So the money is there, you just gotta find it, right? So it's not like I'm coming out of these numbers, or just making them up from anywhere, but, there's no parents, there's no parents here, I believe there were three parents at the meeting on Friday night, and 15 parents are not a reflection, or a proper representation of over 250 kids that are going to need the services. Have you thought about how many kids are gonna move to each individual school? Notifying those families at, in August, that their kids are not gonna go five minutes away from their houses? That's not right. Thank you.
Good evening, Terry Trick Scales, 85 Clark and Drive. I did speak at the last meeting, and I, I still get the impression that we're rushing. We are absolutely rushing into a huge, huge change that will have significant impact on West Orange and the students of West Orange. And if it's so vital that we make the change, we should not do it in September. This is absolutely ludicrous, that you would make such a significant change in the provision of services for the ESL students. I wonder, we talked about seven model school districts. Of those seven, which have similar demographics to West Orange? Have we visited any of those model programs? Have we explored programs similar to the ones that we current, that we currently have? And are there changes, improvements, that we can make to the current program? I just ask you, please, please, don't try to ram this through for September, it's the wrong decision to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rachel Gordon, 8 Maker Street. So, where is the academic or financial justification for this program? In the presentation that I saw livestreamed to the Hispanic Heritage Foundation, Ms. DeMendez told one parent that if they felt their child had a connection to their current teacher, not worry, as that teacher would be moving with students to new, to the new school. But if they're all the same teachers, basically, why are we training teachers over the summer? And other than moving kids to only two schools, the program itself, I mean, is changing a little, but doesn't seem to be, you know, justifying all of this movement, all of this change. Why is the district moving to pay, to bus students to only two schools for essentially an ex, expansion, but not really, like, you're not giving us, like, really great data on why we're doing this? Is there financial savings, or is, if, if it's the same, where is the justification for segregating all the ELL elementary students in two schools? Furthermore, many, many at certain schools don't have cars, some parents, partly due to immigration status. So what happens if they have to pick up their child in the middle of the day, if their child gets sick? Like, this is, these are things to consider, that I feel like we are rushing, as many, many people have said. There's also an indication that the state gives money per student, and the money follows the student, so does that mean that, instead of having money spread over seven schools, it will only be split between two for the rollout? And then, Ms. DeMendez mentioned a specific plan for rollout would be given next week to possibly the teachers, so that they can see this. Why were they, why were those teachers not given the specific plan, well, before this was gonna happen? And why are they only really meeting with teachers now, that there was pushback from people in the community, instead of way before they presented to the board to find out what those teachers wanted beforehand? Or professional development? Like, if they had professional development, instead of the three days she talked about, like, all next year, in preparation, so they could maybe, if they're gonna make this change, make it in a different year? But it seems like, again, we are rushing, 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 and then we keep implementing all these rushed programs, and we don't really have a, a minute to step back and have this justification for why. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Susan Duarte, 14 Coing Place. I'm kinda curious, just last year, students were moved out of the trailers at Gregory because it was a safety concern, it's no longer a safety concern, that's a little troubling. Will parents of non-ESL students, who, you know, the, the class may be, you know, very top-heavy with ESL students, will they have the options at the two schools to not have their kids join in on that class, if, you know, they, they, because I, I mean, there'll, there'll clearly be some issues with, you know, a class that's 50% ESL students and 50% English-speaking students, that could pose some problems with the learning for the non-ESL students. I'm a little troubled by the statistic about the graduation rate. Are those statistics based upon students that started out in kindergarten, or are these students that have transferred into the district? Also, the waiver that we get every year, to allow the way ESL is administered now, if we give that up, that's gone forever. So you gotta think this through, before you pass anything. There was one more thing. Yeah, two meetings ago, you approved two kindergarten classes to keep kids in their neighborhood schools. Great thing, no one opposed to it. Does that only apply to English-speaking students? Because that's the way it appears. And that's it. Thank you.
Jennifer Beazer, 82 Lawrence Avenue. I'm gonna start with a different question, just so I can get it in. There's an item under Finance, number four on the agenda is recommend authorization of submission to the NJ DOE, a request to establish a special education program for behavioral disabilities at Redwood Elementary School. I'm wondering what that is, and does that come out of the special ed audit? Has that been presented to the public in any way before? Is that something that is planned to be implemented in September? On the English, the ESL issue, I hate to just repeat what other people have said, but I do want you to know, it's another person thinking the same things. And I think Parla Mondrigas said it very well, I have the same gut reaction, that now, a second year in a row, we're looking at a very vulnerable population of students and families, and making a big change, really fast. And if this is the right change, it's too soon. You're talking about, like, 80, 80 ELL students at Gregory, spread among a lot of classes, that's a lot of teachers who are going to be handling those classrooms. How is all the training gonna get done? How is the school really gonna be ready to make this work? Because it would be a real shame to try something like this and, and have it be a disaster. I also think that, we, we've had this discussion before about graduation rates, it's not looking at just the number, you have to look underneath the number to know what it means. I don't think that that's persuasive. And I'm wondering, I think, I understood that the students, as they exit ESL, or, as they exit ESL programs, are behind grade level, but how are they doing two years later? So if you have a student who came in in elementary school, it makes sense that they lost some time. But how fast do they catch up? Because observing kids whom my children went to school with, they caught up pretty darn fast, and in middle school, they were in honors classes, and I'm looking at my kids saying, you, you, you have one language, why aren't you in the honors class? So I, I would like to hear more about why we really need to do this, and what it would cost us to provide these kind of services in the neighborhood schools. We've had a lot of talk about how neighborhood schools are the way to go, even for special ed, a while ago. Ms. Rutzke said that the, the gold standard would be to have the preschools in the neighborhood schools, so kids don't have to make that transition. And we've been going in the opposite direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Michaela Bennett, 35, Old Indian Road. I don't remember the names of the, the titles of the two presentations, but thank you for your very reasoned and thorough presentation and research, I really appreciate it. I spoke the last time, you know the things I spoke about? None of them were addressed. I told you Brown versus Board of Education, stop segregation of schools in 1954, and the reason that it had a unanimous vote from the Supreme Court, was because of the psychological, the negative psychological impact it had on students. I didn't hear anything tonight about addressing that issue, and frankly, if you're lying to parents, all right, I won't call it a lie, because I, I, I'll go back and watch the livestream of this, but if you're not explaining to parents that you're going to make a change, and you're going to vote on it, then, you know, I'm, I'm wondering what your motives are in having that meeting, or why you're characterizing the meeting one way when it's not. I don't know if any of you did what I asked you to do, which was read Brown versus Board of Education and familiarize yourself with the reasons why that was decided as it was. I think it's very important, when you're about to segregate schools again, not de facto, de jour, when you're about to approve something like that, which it sounds like you all are going to do, that you, that you look into the case law that still holds true today. In the last minute, Mr. Rutzke, as promised at every meeting, I will ask you about the HIB reports, whether or not any of the HIB reports in which the board reviewed, you conducted yourself personally, and how many of the HIB reports that you presented to the board, involved adults, staff of the school harassing, intimidating, and bullying students within the school?
Okay. Mr. Rutzke and Ms. DeMendez, it sounds like you have the most popular questions for the
Concerning, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, I have my notes here, so I'm gonna have to kinda sift through them. Ms. Rodriguez Johnson spoke about five to seven years to learn a language, that 90 minutes would not have an impact. She gave some very good data, and research with, by which, why we're doing this, right? The 90 minutes would not have an impact, and that's where we are. And that it does matter which are the services that we're giving, giving with the content, and that the students are disadvantaged, given that they're only getting a minute amount of time of focused instruction. She asked the question, why Washington and Gregory? Washington and Gregory have the largest ELL population. I think someone else brought up the point of having 80 new students in a school, it would never be 80 in either instance, they already have 37 at Washington, and they already have, I think it was 28 at Gregory, so it would be an additional between 30 and 40 at the schools. Professional development, three days only, that's not enough, I agree, three days is, is not enough. And we talked about what that would look like, and giving teachers a detailed plan, why didn't we do that? We are in the practice of coming to the board first, to make recommendations and presentations, and then going out to the public. I would love if that was switched around, and we could go to our public first, and get feedback, and then come to the board, and we could just disclaimer each time we go out, pending board approval, pending board approval. I think that's very important, and it would go a long way to help the administration moving forward. Again, not to insinuate that the board would approve something, right, by not coming to the board first, but by being, being able to go to our public first, to our teachers first. With regards to immersion, Ms. Matute Brown, yes, I agree that immersion is extremely effective, and it is most effective when it's structured, and it is most effective when we're looking at our upper level, level students, we briefly had a conversation about that at, at the parent meeting, and we could discuss that further if you'd like. I think there are certain students that that really works for, it depends where, where the students are coming from as well, and what kind of backgrounds and strength they have in their native language and in their education. Also, if those at-risk factors that we talked about in the presentation aren't present, such as socioeconomic, or lower quality of education in their native country, then immersion absolutely works. And so then the specific populations that you referenced in your community in Jersey City, I, I think that would speak to that a bit. As far as shutting down the parent, respectfully, the comment that the parent made was not about the program that we responded to, the comment was about an administrator, a staff member, and a conversation that he had with quote-unquote "the board president" and the vice president. That is what was asked to be put to the side. And my response was simply, we support all of our administrators in our district, to please separate my presentation from that comment, and that we support all of our schools, and that if there are improvements that need to be made in our schools, that is what we're working toward, and it was to that specific comment. As far as not caring about cost, the question that was asked was about, would it cost less not to move the students? Would it cost, wouldn't it cost more? And the answer is, no, it's costing us more if we tried to bring in all of the ESL teachers that we would really need to give the students, if we would try to purchase resources across seven different schools. That was the reference to the savings, and then my response was, but it's not about the savings, that's what I was saying, you know, it wasn't, this plan is not about a dollar, or a cost savings effort, this plan is about the students. And so when I said I wasn't interested in the cost, that is what it was referring to. I'm certainly not opposed to the feedback, to the comments that are being made, so I'm not certain why the idea of an opposed and not opposed. I think what we've, excuse me, I think, excuse me.
Excuse me, please, there'll be no back and forth during the segment, everyone's once have had their comments, we will respond to them, if you have further comments, you can give those comments at the end of the meeting in the open comments section. Thank you very much. Please respect the speakers, as we respect you. Thank you.
I think that listening to, the teachers, listening to the parents, listening to all of the community is extremely important. We are taking all of the feedback, we are considering that as we make our recommendations, and we will continue to do so. Ms. Rodriguez, why proposing this kind of change at the end of the year? You and I also had an opportunity, Mondrigas, I'm sorry, we also had a, a chance to speak at the Hispanic Foundations meeting. Honestly, you know, our presentation went, we, we handed in our recommendations back in March, due to the budget, it kept getting pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. Our timeline was originally beginning in March, and so here we are, and so then, yes, now it is an aggressive timeline, it is a very aggressive timeline, given the fact that we moved from beginning recommendations in March to... in March to being able to present them at a late date of May. So it is true. That's absolutely where we are. Mr. Salinas, I did not lie to the parents. I told the parents that we made recommendations, that there was no vote taken at the last meeting and that there was no vote planned for this meeting, that there was nothing coming this meeting but an update and that at the next future meeting, June 18th, I believe is the date, that that's where if the board sees fit, that we would see a vote and that it was up to the board. Seven model school districts of the seven, which have similar demographics. I can look into the demographics of each of them. I know the Franklin Public Schools has very similar demographics to West Orange. Have we visited any of the models? Yes, we have. And we can bring out an outline and we can bring teachers to those model programs and really take a look at them as a group, as a PLC together. Ms. Gordon, ESL teachers moving to new schools, why are we training them over the summer? The training is for general education teachers. Again, it would begin over the summer, it would not be three days. So ESL teachers are in the recommendation to move to the new school with their students. And we would begin training general education. PSYOP is a sheltered instruction protocol. That training is for general education teachers so that when the ESL teacher works with the general education teacher, that they both have those strategies. With regard to moving to schools and the program seeming the same, I think we went through all of the different ways that the program would be different, where we would really be able to service the students and where we're not able to really maximize the effectiveness of our instruction with one teacher at each school servicing four different proficiency levels for each different grade level, in some instances, a class size of one or two, and we're not meeting compliance. I want to clarify the graduation rate. The graduation rate is the percentage of students who are graduating. It's not the percentage of students who are not. So it's not 76% who are not, it's 76% who are in comparison to the school districts of 80, I don't remember the, 86%. So there's a gap there. But it's not that 76% are not graduating, it's that 76% are graduating in comparison to the 86% of, or I have to check that number now, I left my stat there. Many parents at certain schools don't have cars, what if they have to pick up their child if they get sick? The transportation is an issue that the board has asked us to take a look at comprehensively. So we're going to look at all of those factors and then we'll come back and talk to the board about all of those factors and we'll include that in our feedback, in our recommendations.
Can you please clarify that it's actually three schools?
And we are proposing that we have the ELL program, thank you, Ms. Mordecai, at the three schools. It would be Washington, it would be Gregory, and it would be Kelly. Again, the reasons for Gregory and Washington is because those are the two schools that have the greatest population and space. So I know questions were made about Hazel. Hazel does not have the largest number, but it's in comparison to, they don't have any space at all. They don't have not one extra classroom. We did look, we walked through the building, we looked at the class size, we looked at different ways. Kelly does have the LLDN and the inclusion programs and so then we would not recommend to remove those students out of that LLDN inclusion program. And then we would service the ELL students at Kelly so they would remain. I think someone else would have to address, Mr. Rutzke, the trailers at Gregory and the idea of, okay.
Safety, yes.
Will parents of non-ESL students have the option to not join in that class? I hope not. I think that all of our students should learn together. I don't think that addressing the needs of a specialized population puts other students at a disadvantage. If so, then we wouldn't have inclusion. I think that all of our students learning together is of great benefit to all students. And then if that would be the reason, then why immersion and why the argument to leave them with all of the other students? I think the ones who are at a disadvantage now are the English language learners because they're not being supported the way they need to. Someone spoke about how are they doing two years later observing kids? They get caught up pretty fast. Well, the statistics or the data that we gave is students who exit the program, right, at 23% proficiency. And that is the problem. It's not when they enter the program, it's how long they take to learn the language. And when they exit, are they then able to compete with their monolingual peers? And right now, that's not what we're seeing. What would it cost us to provide this in the neighborhood schools? We've been asked to begin that analysis minimally, minimally. It would take one to two teachers per building, with the exception of St. Cloud and Mount Pleasant, because they have seven, I think, and 15 minimally. What did we save in textbooks? If we only purchased for the two buildings, that was the $300,000. We would have spent an extra $300,000 to have to do class sets, classroom libraries, teacher instructional materials, times seven. So I think that answers that. You know, the idea of segregation, I mean, you know, bilingual education and bringing students into schools to service them by program has been a debate and I'm not expecting to sway or convince anyone to change their position. I know that it's just where it is. It's been argued for decades. And so it will be an argument that continues. You know, right now, we're 1 in 9 is an L. By 2025, 1 in 4 will be an L. And I think the argument will continue to perpetuate.
Let me just add a couple more things. Ms. Bennett, note to the HIB reports. Ms. Beazer, the behavioral disabilities class has been discussed for quite a while. And one of the things we always talk about with our out-of-district students is, is it possible to bring them back to district? And being able to service students who would need to go out of district would be something that would have to happen in this summer and September if we did not start the behavioral disabilities class. What's on the agenda is the approval. The county has to have the board approve the class first and then the county approves the class and that goes down to the Department of Education after that piece. So that's why it's on the agenda. Mr. Ante, just a couple of points. Two classes for Gen Ed to keep in the home school, yes. It's just the same conversation about trying to bring as many kids and keep as many kids in the home school. Now, the ELL population is a specialized population, similar to sitting in front of you, Dr. Plara, with the LLD students. And so there are populations in the district that have to go to certain schools. But it's always the goal to try and keep kids. Now, this goes back to overcrowding. And the main reason that we were trying to look at something different elementary school is because I get calls all spring long about, I've been looking at a house in this neighborhood of West Orange and I love it, and when I come to register, I'm told that I have to go to this other school because whatever grade level was closed out because that school was closed out. And it's a horrible conversation because I don't have a solution for them. In this situation, we're able to add two additional classes that were able to help us keep some of those kids in neighborhood school. Unfortunately, we have two right now, Kelly and Mount Pleasant. The kindergartens are, not Mount Pleasant, St. Cloud, they're closed. So if somebody moves into that neighborhood tomorrow, they cannot attend. If they have a kindergarten, they cannot go to either one of those schools and then we have to work with them. The idea behind trying to add those is to keep them in their neighborhood school and to try and reduce that issue of having to go to a different school when they just bought a home in a certain neighborhood. As far as the trailers and the safety concern, the trailers are 15 years old. Now, they're approved every year. They have to be inspected for safety and other things and they're approved every year. Our goal has been for many years to try and eliminate the trailers. Some of the trailers, when they're newer, are very nice. People request them because of special air conditioning, the way they're made, and so on and so forth. In this case, it's not that there's any safety concern with the Gregory. In fact, they're being used as we speak. This year, they're being used by kids and by staff. So it wasn't so much a safety concern as they're just getting old and we're trying to eliminate all the trailers across the three schools that have them. I think that covers everything.
Okay. Just a couple of comments. First, for everyone who came up to the mic tonight, we realize that what the concerns you're sharing with us, the perspectives you're sharing with us are coming from a place of caring. They're coming from a place of passionate caring about our children, about our schools, and about our neighborhood. And we need to hear those critical opinions. One of the overriding sentiments that we've heard tonight is, slow down. Don't rush to this. Even if it is, even if it turns out to be the right thing to do, let's do it in the right way. Let's make sure the teachers have a chance for professional development. Let's make sure that school administrators at each of the schools have a chance to prepare. Let's make sure that parents have a chance to fully give their feedback and that teachers have a chance to fully give their feedback. So that process has only begun. We still have quite a ways to go. Ms. Mendez, Mr. Plata, have a ways to go in getting more of that feedback. And Ms. Mendez, always, if the board can do something different or better, if you feel that going out and getting that data and information, then coming to us and saying, here's what we found out, just as you'd pull, you know, data, secondary data from another source, if you feel that that's going to help you do what you do and you're very good at what you do, and before you bring it to us, that's fine. Let us know what you need. But we hear you. Slow down. Make sure we've heard from everyone. Get the data. In some cases, we need to do a better job of presenting the argument. I think it was Mr. Ron talked about selling it. Have to do a better job of communicating and presenting it. And part of that will also come with slowing down. So we have a chance for the quality exchange, for everyone to hear and be heard. And that's very important. So we do hear you loud and clear. I'm not going to go through each point. This is Bennett. Brown versus Board of Education. That's, no, no, in terms of understanding it, I've got to say that, and this, you know, personally, as well as I'm sure our board is well aware, I actually grew up in a time when even though segregation had been outlawed, it was still de facto in many places. And I'm not going to go through what my experiences were as one of six black kids at an otherwise white school. So Brown versus Board of Education was about separate and unequal. Unequal in the resources of the books, unequal in so many ways, in every way. What we're trying to do here, and maybe this isn't the way to do it, we hear that loud and clear, but it's in fact to balance an area that's already unequal. If a child is not learning, getting to learn science, math, and social studies in their language while learning English, we need to address that because that child will fall behind and that's not fair to that child. That's unequal. That is unequal. Okay? So we understand Brown versus Board of Education. We understand the passion and the concern around the idea of segregation. God knows we get that. I know I do personally. Been there. Okay? But we need to all take a step back, really deeply listen to each other, share the feedback, share the input, look at the data. I believe as Ms. Stiles mentioned, make sure we've visited the schools, make sure we have gotten, you know, looked at the other models out there and take a second look at, yeah, how do we do this in each building? What would it take? How much more is it going to cost? Mr. Salinas, we do not have a budget surplus. We increased our budget by 1.67%. We stayed under cap so that we wouldn't tax the taxpayer even more, but we still raised the taxpayer's taxes. We far from have a surplus. Healthcare went up, salaries went up, a lot of things went up, as well as the things we needed to fund to run our schools every day. So I wish we had a surplus, but that was not the case. But once again, to everyone, thank you, thank you, thank you for sharing your feelings, for sharing your perspectives, for sharing your experiences. The folks who used to be that ESL kid, you know, you've lived this personally. Thank you for sharing that with us. And we will continue to listen to you and we look forward to your feedback. Thank you. Yes. Please.
I'd just like to add on to what you've said. I'm fully aware of Brown versus Board of Ed and I have read it. In addition, a few weeks ago, on the anniversary of Brown versus Board of Ed, May 17th, a group of organizations filed a lawsuit against the New Jersey Department of Education saying New Jersey schools are the sixth most segregated in all of America. And some of the remedies that they did describe is to actually get away from neighborhood schools and to start forming magnet schools because some neighborhood schools going way back are actually segregated because of redlining. But I don't want to take up the time talking about that, but if you want to go and Google it, there was a lawsuit filed a couple of weeks ago, press conference in Trenton, and it outlines everything there. Okay? So the board is very well aware of Brown versus Board of Ed. I am too.
And on that, just one last quick comment. While we are not moving ahead yet and we're going to continue to listen, keep in mind for those who mentioned segregation, the children who are shifting to another school will be joining, 300 to 400 children who are not ELL kids. So we want our kids to have the cultural exchange, to have the interpersonal exchange, to learn from each other's experiences in the classroom together. We want that, we need that, for the kids who are ELL, for the kids who are not. It's part of the enriching experience that is West Orange schools. So once again, thank you for sharing your perspectives and we look forward to hearing from you. Next. May I have a motion to move Personnel Items 1 through 6, including the addendum, please?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? I apologize. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Calavano, roll call, please.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
So.
Understood. Thank you. Next is curriculum and instruction. May I have a motion to move Items 1 through 3 along with the attachments 7, 8, and 9, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Calavano.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
All right. May I have a motion to move Finance along with the addendum under Business Office? That's Finance A1 through 8, through number 8, please?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Before we vote, I want to explain something about Item Number 9, which was part of the addendum. We have listened to what you've been asking us to do, for those who have asked us to look into various areas that you felt needed to be investigated further. And the board has decided that in order to really bring about a sense of full transparency, to guarantee that our actions and our optics in conducting the business of the district is done so with complete transparency, devoid of any possibility or appearance of conflict. The West Orange Board of Education has decided, and above all, to preserve integrity, has decided to hire an outside third-party investigator, investigative firm. The firm that is referenced in the resolution is the firm of Chiesa, Shehennian, and Giyantumasi. And Attorney Jeff Chiesa, who's a member of the firm, one of senior partners and members of the firm, is in fact a former Attorney General for the state of New Jersey. He's considered not only highly reputable, he's well-liked and well-respected by both parties. He was also appointed to be Senator when Senator Frank Lautenberg passed, and he is a man of, known to be a man of unquestionable integrity. The firm also special, has an area of specialty that focuses on investigation. So once again, we hear you, and we are attempting to meet the needs. I will now read the actual resolution.
Mr. Robertson, including number 9.
I think you mentioned 1 through 8.
Oh, I apologize. That includes number 9. I apologize. Thank you, as in the addendum. And number 9 is the resolution. Whereas the West Orange Board of Education has identified the need for internal investigations regarding certain employment and/or financial matters, and whereas the West Orange Board of Education has determined that the investigation should be conducted by a firm that has experience and expertise in conducting such investigations, and whereas the West Orange Board of Education has interviewed and evaluated the law firm of Chiesa, Shehennian, and Giyantumasi P C, located at 1 Boland Avenue, West Orange, New Jersey, and has determined that it possesses substantial experience and expertise in conducting such investigations regarding employment and/or financial matters involving public entities, now therefore be it resolved that the West Orange Board of Education hereby retains the law firm of Chiesa, Shehennian, and Giyantumasi P C as special legal counsel to conduct two separate investigations regarding certain employment matters regarding employee number 7228 and/or financial matters, and agrees to reimburse the firm for the cost of the investigations and pay for the services it provides at the billing rate set forth in the firm's retainer letter dated June 1, 2018. That is $400 per hour for senior partners, $350 per hour for partners, $240 per hour for associates, and $90 per hour for paralegals in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Also note that they will have to give us status reports as they reach each incremental cost of $10,000. Having gotten the two motions, Mr. Calavano, roll call, please.
So just to be clear on the Finance, we're going to move, we're moving under Special Services 1 through 4.
Yes.
And under Business 1 through 9.
Under Business 1 through 9, as part of Finance, yes.
And Addendum.
And includes the addendum, which is number 9. Correct.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
I'm sorry, a discussion by the board? I have a question.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay.
I apologize.
Mr. Calavano, could you please give an update to the board at the next meeting of the ESIP? I know we had a guarantee from Honeywell. I'd just like to know where we are with the guarantee.
That update won't come until one year after we finalize the project, which will be sometime in December. We'd have to wait for the bills sometime in January, so I'm thinking end of January, early February, we'll have that update.
Okay. And in the meantime, do we have any other change orders or any other interest amounts that are?
Project's closed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Calavano?
I'll start all over again. Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
Not yet. Public comment, petitions and hearings is Item Number 11. Next is Reports. May I have a motion to move Reports, Letter D, Items Number 1 and 2?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Calavano, roll call, please.
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
Okay. Item Number 9, Reports from the Board President and our Board Members. Mrs. Mordecai, would you like to lead us off, please?
Sure, I'll start. And I'll make it brief because I know the public is waiting to ask questions. On last Thursday, no, last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the Safety and Security Conference held by New Jersey School Board Association. I got back a lot of information, which I'll share with the board at a later date. We will be looking at a security audit, and a lot of the information I got there includes free resources from the New Jersey Department of Education, as well as Homeland Security. That's it. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Mr. Alper?
Just two quick things. First, back on, I want to say May 18th, we skipped talking about it last meeting, I went to the New Jersey School Boards Delegate Assembly, is the new guy, I get to do that, and we did pass two resolutions, one on gun violence, which is very similar to the one that we had already passed here, it's just a little bit less specific so that the lobbyists from school boards don't have their hands tied on certain issues, and a second one on fair school funding, which was good to see. The other thing is just to let people know, and I don't know if it's too late for this, but Save Our Schools New Jersey and the Department of Education are improbably, but apparently truly, working together on a Perspectives on Park Community Roundtable session, and I don't know if there are still tickets available, it was through Eventbrite, and it's free, but the local session is Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Bloomfield High School. And I think if you just look on Wocast or other groups, you'll see postings about this and see if maybe you can sign up. I'm not sure how much they're going to listen to us, but it's obviously the future of assessments in New Jersey is something really important that we should all be focused on, and hopefully we're able to give some input to turn. That's all I've got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Schwartzbaum?
I'm good.
Okay. I'll be brief as well. I had a chance this year to attend the Honors Society induction for the first time as a parent. So it was very, it was great to be there for my son and to see all the folks that I've watched grow up since, many since kindergarten. Didn't report last meeting, I don't think, but also enjoyed our, the concert by our choir and glee club and chorus and all that wonder, it was just amazing music, and it was also a wonderful opportunity for the kids, for the Edison Singers to, for their first time, join those whom they seek to emulate their peer mentors. Also had an opportunity to attend, as parent and board member, the Air Force Junior R T C Awards Banquet, and wow, we have some amazing, amazing leaders, young leaders, and it was just, it was quite the event, and just a joy to be a part of it. And last, coming up this Thursday, West Orange African Heritage Organization has its first Thursdays for the month of June. It'll be 7:30 to 10 o'clock. Eat, drink, enjoy, socialize, network at the Prima Vera Lounge in the Wilshire Grand Hotel this Thursday from 7:30 to 10:00. And Sunday, Mrs. Mordecai, it's this Sunday, right, that we have Men Who Cook. Come on out, enjoy fantastic cuisine by these men who are competing in their chef contest. There'll also be music, there'll be a number of activities and beverages, galore, and all that wonderful stuff. And Mrs. Mordecai and I both have tickets. I think you have tickets with you tonight.
Yes, I do. And we, at that time, we also showcased the students who are the recipients of the scholarships for this year.
That's right. That's right. We're going to say, we're going to showcase.
Looking forward to meet them.
Excellent. And what time is that again? That's Sunday, the 10th?
From 1 to 4.
1 to 4.
Yes.
1 to 4. So look forward, if you can, if you can come. Mrs. Mordecai is here tonight, she has tickets. Wonderful event every year, and it raises money for our scholarship fund. That's it. The next board meeting will be held 6:30 p.m., public session at 8:00 on June 18th, right here, same Bat Station. Now, we would like to have petitions and hearings of our citizens. You have three minutes each. Please come on up, state your name and address, and share with us your thoughts. Come on up to the mic.
Just confirming, this is open public comment, right?
Yes, it is. Open public comment is better.
Caitla Bennett, 35, Old Indian Road. Thank you for investigating. What we all know needs to be investigated. Thank you. On behalf of all the people who asked you to look into this, thank you for investigating. Number one. Number two, the things that I've posted about, that you took issue with, and that you decided to write your letter to the public, letting them know that you'd be considering taking action in the form of an investigation. You intimate, you know, that I was defaming some people. I'd love for you to share that information with me, because I only operate in truth. So the things that I've posted about and shared with all of you, you've all received the information from me about. I still, two weeks after your last meeting, when Mr. Rutske assured me that on Wednesday he'd be contacting me for my appeal, to schedule my appeal, I'm still waiting, nothing from Mr. Rutske. But he's been pretty busy lately, I think. I bring to your attention the fact that I've asked twice privately, so now I will ask publicly, that you make sure to investigate the fact that there was an employee of the district who spent the entire day on Facebook calling her attorney about concerns about something that I've posted. She involved people from my son's school, and she secured my son's educational record for her own personal, private purposes. FERPA is the law, I've cited to that in the private communications, but I would like to know that someone is taking that seriously and that someone is investigating that. I would expect that that someone would be her boss. If you need me to resend the email to all of you, all I'm doing is making you further complicit because you're not responding. A year ago and a month, I brought to your attention the abuse of 70 students. That has never been investigated. You all have seen the videos at this point. It still remains uninvestigated. I received no determination letter. You have no investigative file. It's unacceptable. Ms. Mordecai was the president of the board at that time. She assured me that Mr. Rutske would give back to me. He never did. And then when I met with him and the board's attorney and the board's president, he admitted no file. How do you have no file when the allegation is abuse of 70 students? The reason why you?
Excuse me, Ms. Bennett, you're making allegations, you have a First Amendment right to speak.
Okay, but?
However, you must?
No, no, but you've stopped the time, Lee. So just?
You have to be, you have to be, you have to be respectful, and we're not, we're not going to respond to this, to these allegations.
Mr. Franklin, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Stop, stop, stop.
Please, please. Order, please, one person at a time.
Just, before you start the clock again, Mr. Franklin, please take the message back to Mr. Jacoby, that if he had anything to do with the drafting of that letter that was sent to the public, where he's alleging defamation, that he and I should have a conversation. I mean, defamation's very simple. I mean, thank you for interrupting me, but for what? You're just trying to slow me down. You're not going to slow me down. Had the investigation, had the investigation occurred of the incident that I brought to your attention, we wouldn't be talking about all the things. Let me say one more thing to you. You worked as a teacher in Ohio. Your resume is void of your teaching in Ohio. And the police report that I read?
Thank you very much, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
I pity you.
Ms. Bennett, please, please. Thank you so much.
I wrote it down. My name is Susan Maccabee, and I live at Two Mountain Way. I have come here to talk about communication and parental involvement. I've been quite upset recently about some of the stuff going on. I feel like communication is like going to a well. In my example, people come to the well and deposit water when they talk, and then they take water out when they listen. We desperately need this interaction, this water, to be clean. We need people to be able to express their concerns and be able to listen with an open mind. I feel that our well has been poisoned. There are a handful of people who have decided that the superintendent is the largest evil they have ever seen, and seem to be determined to take him down at all costs. Every time they stand up to speak, they poison our well. The sheer inappropriateness of their talking points makes it much harder for the rest of us with ongoing concerns that we wish to share with the board to be heard. I don't blame the superintendent for missing responses to some legitimate questions when he has to sit up there composed and listen to some of this stuff. I'm starting to be amazed that he hears anything we say, after all the vitriol that is spewed out. I also must say that a fine woman's name has been dragged in the mud. She has worked for the Gregory School for generations of kids, and she does not deserve to be besmirched. The second part of my comment is about parental involvement in the decisions that the school district makes. I think there are certainly items where we need more parental involvement. I think that things like moving the E S L students to other schools needs to have more stakeholders. However, that doesn't mean that the Board of Education hasn't reached out to us parents. Right now, I'm on the math committee. They're doing excellent in-depth analysis of our math programs throughout all the grades. The teachers are doing a lot. The committee was open for parents to join. I missed one meeting, the first meeting, but I've made all the others. There was only one other parent I saw at any of the meetings that I was at, and he was only there for one of the meetings. I hear all the time about how parents hate this new math, but they don't step forward to help the school understand why. There have been many instances where I have gotten involved at my school. We had some problems with lunch aids yelling at our kids, a bunch of parents emailed the principals, and it got better. We can get involved and make positive changes, but coming here to scream insults does not accomplish anything. Our teachers, our administrators, and even our support staff are professionals and need to be treated as our partners, not our enemies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Heather Hamilton, 24 Klonifer Road. I want to speak on the topic of magnet schools and segregation that Ms. Mordecai mentioned. How does moving all the E L L schools to a new school not create a segregated school on the other end? And also, how are our students at Redwood and St. Cloud negatively affected by not being exposed to these, those E L L students and their cultural contributions to a neighborhood school? Specifically, inspiring our English-language speakers to embrace a second language. Diversity is important. It is essential. I'm concerned about how placing import on the comfort of families that move into the Redwood and St. Cloud District, but only if you're an English-language speaker. So being a non-English-language-speaking, tax-paying family doesn't matter when wanting to move to a neighborhood and going to a local school. Also, is the $300,000 saved from congregating these students, is that on top of the extra busing costs that are going to be implemented? And I'd also like to speak about the dress code. I'm speaking to you today regarding this district dress code policy. Unfortunately, I find the language of it un-
Separating the Spanish-speaking kids won't make it go away. It would make it worse. How will they feel when they learn that their friends that have helped them with English will be going to a different school than them? Also, what are you teaching the English-speaking kids when they, when you separate the Spanish-speaking kids? Lastly, how will the Spanish-speaking kids feel? Not good enough? Tonight, as a student of the West Orange Public School District, I am begging you to truly think with your brains and hearts of how this will affect our town, our schools, and my peers. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Heather Hamilton, 24 Clonifer Road. Um, I want to speak on the topic of magnet schools and segregation that Ms. Mordecai mentioned. How does moving all the ELL schools to a new school not create a segregated school on the other end? And also, how are our students at Redwood and St. Cloud negatively affected by not being exposed to these, those ELL students and their cultural contributions to a neighborhood school? Specifically, inspiring our English language speakers to embrace a second, second language. Diversity is important. It is essential. I'm concerned about how placing import on the comfort of families that move into the Redwood and St. Cloud district, but only if you're an English language speaker. So being a non-English language-speaking, tax-paying family doesn't matter when wanting to move to a neighborhood and going to a local school. Also, is the $300,000 saved from congregate, congregating these students, is that on top of the extra busing costs that are going to be implemented? And I'd also like to speak about the dress code. I'm speaking to you today regarding this district dress code policy. Unfortunately, I find the language of it unnecessarily punitive towards girls and our gender non-conforming pupils. The policy dictates a type of modesty policing that has a history of racist, classist, and sexist hegemony that we are all working hard to undo, to make a safer environment for all peoples. I fear that our young girls with their changing bodies will face undue duress, shame, and confusion about themselves, their agency, and their place in our culture. I would appreciate your guidance in opening up this discussion to the community of parents, students, and administration, so that we can come up with an agreement as to a policy that will keep our children safe, remove all notions of victim blaming, and allow our children freedom to express themselves as they and their parents see fit. I also think this is a great opportunity to engage the community about topics such as toxic masculinity, consent, and making our boys responsible for themselves and their biology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Polara. I live at Kelly Elementary School. I just had a, a quick thought that maybe in your research and, and studying about the ESL program, you might want to take a look at, back in the eighties, they moved the lines for the schools, the, for the demographic lines for which school, which schools the students were going to go to. So, um, what used to be the definition of a neighborhood school, which is like Hazel Avenue School or Washington School currently, they're all walkers. But I know a large part of my school population is bused from, actually closer to Washington School, so I'm wondering in your transportation course whether some of the students actually will be going to their old neighborhood school before they move the lines. So I, I guess it's just something else to look at when you're, um, looking at costs and looking at whether this approach is going to be feasible or not. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Chau.
Hello there. Tom Bolsho, 40 Overlook Avenue. I just wanted to go through Mr. Rutske's employment history. So I know that you worked in SOMA, 1995 to 1999, right? South Orange Maplewood, Jefferson Elementary. Your next employment was, uh, from, contractually from 1999 to 2000, Kinnellon Public Schools? Is that correct? And then you resigned in 1999, December 14th. It's a matter of public record. And then your next place of employment was Lakewood City, Ohio? Is that correct? And then your next place of employment was Teaneck, which is in New Jersey. Your next place of employment was Ridgefield. Your next place of employment was Parsippany. Then you were superintendent in Roseland. And then you were the super, you've been superintendent in West Orange. Is that correct?
Uh, we, Mr. Bolsho, you can speak, but we can't go back and forth, number one. Number two, on any personnel matter, we'll always listen. You can, you can, hold his time right there, please.
Okay.
I'm not going to rob him of time, not, definitely not. On any personnel matter, we will listen, but we can't really have a back and forth exchange. Uh, as stated earlier, everything that you've brought forward to us and anybody else, all items that have been brought to us for investigation-
I didn't, I just, this is my first time.
-have or are being investigated, but we can't, when you're stopping to say, "Is that true?"
Well, that, I didn't, I don't, I know, I know the rules. I've been here before. So the point was, you know, is that true? He's writing it down. I'm assuming at the end he'll come back.
Rhetorical. Got it. Okay. Please continue. I apologize.
Oh, I talked to Terry from Camp Canadensis today, so don't worry. It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lawrence Maccabee, Two Mountain Way, Little Yellow House. Greetings. Um, I have something to ask and something to give you. You're all smart people. You're responsible. You're leaders in the community. You've been elected to this office by the people in this town. To lead is not to lead blindly. The loudest voices are not the majority of the voices. They never are. To lead is to do the right thing for the right reasons. You don't need me to tell you this, but sometimes when the heat gets up and the blood gets hot, it needs to be said out loud. I have two sons. They both have had academic challenges. Both are where they are because of the people and Gregory School and the people in Gregory School. I owe those people personally for, from the principal down to the office staff. I can't repay that debt. You were part of that, so I thank all of you for what you've done for my children. In the recent unpleasantness, the principal and staff of that school were attacked and insulted casually. Others have been attacked with a level of vitriol hitherto unseen, and I've hitherto seen a lot. I stay, I've spoken against this in the past. I will continue if I need to to get up and drag my kids and speak against it going forward. These are good people. They are not corrupt. The ask, decide wisely and well. Do the right thing for the right reasons. It sounds like you're moving that way, and I appreciate it. I have full faith you will do the right thing. So do the vast majority of the people in West Orange, even though you don't hear their voices as loud as others. For what I'm going to give you, you got at least two minutes of someone not yelling at you or accusing you of anything. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Come on down. Hello.
Hi. Perla Mondriguez, 59, Winding Way. I want to respond to Mr. Rutske's comment. I found them to be very enlightening that, um, the special needs population and the ELL population are specialized, and therefore you are justified in moving them onto a group, onto themselves, removing them from their neighborhood schools. I understand that you justify it, um, but it, it really isn't necessary. I have a child who is extremely specialized. He's probably the only child in the entire school district with his syndrome. It's very rare. He was born floppy, like a rag doll, couldn't open his eyes, even though he was born full-term. He has hypothalamic dysfunction. Your hypothalamus regulates your body, so there is dysfunction of everything, emotional, temperature, metabolism, all of it. But he's been going to Gregory, just like his brothers, since kindergarten. He joined the 12-minute jogging club, Ms. Asman's Jogging Club, which was a huge shock and surprise, but we were very happy. But see, he can do it. He's specialized, but we can meet his needs in his neighborhood school. It is not a reason to remove students. Now, you may do it for other reasons. May, maybe there are logistical reasons, maybe there are financial reasons, but to point to students' needs as a reason for moving them, I, I, I think we can do better than that. I really take issue with your statement that now there are people who are new to the neighborhood and they can go to their neighborhood school, yay, because removing ELL kids? Like, so they live there, they have a home there, but they don't deserve to go there because they have a need? But now these new, non-ELL people, yay for them? I, I take issue with that. Also, Mrs. Mordecai, with regard to segregation and the New Jersey lawsuit, we are making our schools more segregated because you are taking our least diverse schools and you're removing the diverse population, the foreign language speakers, into other schools and into the schools that are more diverse. So great, we're even more diverse, which is, I mean, good for me, right? I'm a Gregory parent, but it's making our school system even more segregated.
Sahi Bennett, 35 Old Indian Road. First of all, let me apologize to everyone in the room for my outburst. Generally, my wife is the fiery one, and I am the reserved one. Tonight, that role has been reversed, so I just want to come out, take the first 15 seconds and apologize to everybody.
Thank you.
All right? Um, but I was angered. And I want you to understand where that anger comes from. Because last year, like my wife had said, we sat there in the sun, looking at 70 kids who'd been, had their recess taken away three consecutive days. A principal that was screaming at the kids. Nothing was done. Not a phone call to review, to talk to the parents. The witnesses, video, photographs. Nothing was done. So to have someone in an outside counsel come in and say that, that's not the case is offensive because we were there. And all the other things that have been brought to your attention over the last six months, over personal matters, over matters of financial, whatever the case may be, have been brought to your attention. And the fact that we have to, that you have to hire an outside counsel when the evidence, the material evidence has been brought forth to you, not by the CIA, not by the FBI, not from a private investigator, but citizens of this town who have taken the time that you five did not take is entirely offensive. Thank you. That's all I have to say because if I say anymore, it might get ugly.
Lisa Pessini Asman. I've been teaching in this school district for 31 years. There's days I wonder why I care so much, since I'm 58 years old and I probably don't have many years left. Teachers are very disappointed that the West Orange community has lost the focus of what's important. Too many individuals are coming with their personal axes to grind, where the focus should be on education and education of the children. We should be getting, as teachers, the support from the Board of Education, the community, and the resources to teach the children. Parents should be making sure that their children are ready every day to come to school to learn. Some parents are teaching their children terrible lessons with all this social media, the bashing of teachers, the bashing of administrators. So therefore, they are learning that lesson from their parents' behavior, talking back to teachers, cursing in classes. And again, I think it's a very cowardly way. I believe in facing people, talking to people, talking about the differences that people have. And this social media has made it very cowardly that you could just do it. If parents and people think that teachers or administrators don't know that they're talking about them because they might not publicly name them by name, we know, okay? We know exactly who you're talking about. And we're human beings too, and it hurts. It hurts administrators, it hurts children. Teachers are supposed to be professional, and we are professional. But it hurts. And I'm sure tomorrow that what I stated today, I'll be reading about, that people have already posted on social media about me. But the difference, things that people have to know about me is I've survived 31 years of teaching. And even though people are talking rudely still behind me, I still love what I do, like most teachers do. 31 years. I'm still doing a better job of teaching now than I was first started. And I did have a nice parent that talked about my jogging club, and her son couldn't jog a minute or two, but I believed in him enough that he was able to jog 12 minutes and join that jogging club. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
My name is Jean Torito. I'm a teacher at Gregory School, and I told you, you'd probably be seeing a lot of me. I, I don't even know what to say anymore. I've been a teacher at Gregory School for 23 years, and I just feel like our school is under siege, our teachers are under siege, the board is under siege, our superintendent is as well. I'm very active in the union. I am very opinionated. I have spoken to the board before when we disagreed, union had disagreements with the board and whatever was going on. And I made statements at that time. We had our disagreements, but I was hoping that we were at the point where we could move forward, not keep looking back and move forward. And I've seen a difference in different things that Mr. Rutske has done, the board has done, and I appreciate them. It's just very sad to me that after 23 years, this is where we are, and I just wish that we could stop the bleeding. I don't understand if there are personal vendettas that people have, that they feel the need to come up here and say the things that they're saying, but to me as a teacher, it just rips my guts out, and I think it's disgusting, and I wish it would stop. And I'll probably see you again in another two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Anybody else? All right. Mr. Rutske, did you want to respond to?
So let's just talk about a couple of things. No, I never taught in Ohio, so, um, something that you're talking about, that's not true. As far as the investigation last year, um, the investigation was done. We looked into it. You sat in my office and said, "I don't even need to know anything about it. Please go and fix the problem." Okay? So went over, I met with everybody. I can't talk in too much detail because we're talking about personnel members, between the principal, lunch aids, et cetera, um, and from there. We met with the president, the attorney, and you made some statements. Those statements were very different, um, and so that required some further investigation, which was done. And, um, looked at the video, shared the video with individuals need to be shared with. And again, um, while I know that you wanted some individuals to be fired based on their actions, I can't, um, I can't talk further than that about it. So again, I'm not going to go back and forth, but, you know, I, I think, I think what's being done, I'm thrilled that somebody's coming in to investigate it because I'm very confident. I know there's no issue over Gregory. The gentleman sitting beside me, the BA and the principal, I believe handled it beautifully and what needed to be done. Again, because it's a personnel matter, um, you know, if we were trying to hide something, do we really think, a little common sense goes a long way, that when it's in the report of the audit and presented publicly and it's discussed, why would we try to hide something? So, um, again, just the idea about, uh, there's nobody that's more excited about it to come in, and then they can see exactly what was done, how it was done, and there won't be any issue from that, and then we can move forward. So that'll, that'll be over with. Mrs. Maccabee, I, I forget, I don't think we addressed from the first comment about, can we give you resources to help if the program here was through? And then you made another comment. The answer is yes. We'll definitely help you, uh, with getting communication, parent involvement over Gregory if, uh, the plan goes through. Yeah, I have several things. Ms. Hamilton, I think we discussed some of the things that you brought up. I'm not sure if there's anything else. The $300,000 in savings was from materials that was not on top of the, um, so the, the cost of the busing obviously would be taken out of that. It was not $300,000 total. As far as the dress code- As far as the dress code, we are going to look at the policy, the handbooks, et cetera, about dress code this summer, when all the administrators can come and sit down. We're getting feedback from the, the teaching staff and where appropriate students, where they could give us some, some help on how they feel. One of the things that is accurate when you don't have a statement, especially for girls, a tall girl that's wearing a skirt versus a short girl who's wearing a skirt is very different. So we need to make sure we're clear in how we lay out that language, so it's consistent across the district. Camp Canidensis, had a great time there. It was a wonderful place, Mr. Walsh, really great place. Loved every second of it. Let's see here. Mrs. Rodriguez, I wasn't saying that students, was students, student needs needed to be moved. I was saying specialized populations need to be moved in general. Everything is specific, everything is general. So we're not going to say that every shoe fits the same child. It does not. The, the idea of, and, and nor did I say anything about moving ELL students or the L students is going to allow for kids that move into that neighborhood so they can go there. I've been saying for years, I've been saying for years that it's really unfortunate when a parent calls me and it's closed, that they can't, because that's why they bought in that neighborhood. The decision about Ls has nothing to do, neither one of those are comparable. The idea of, of, of trying to have, to accommodate a parent who researches, decides, goes through the, the, the whole process of buying a house, and then they find out that they cannot attend that school, is very disheartening. That's my point. Had nothing to do with the Ls. If the Ls stay in their neighborhood schools, that's fine. The problem is that we do not believe that that is the most effective learning opportunity for those students. Mr. Bennett, again, I, I guess I discussed what you brought up. As far as the principal screaming at the kids, again, I can't go into too much depth, but there were conversations with everybody involved in that entire situation. We, we spoke to them. We made adjustments so things never happen again, and to my understanding, they haven't. You know, but again, we want to make sure that you realize that I can't go into too much as far as the lunch aids, the whoever, the phys ed teachers out there, et cetera, when it comes to that. And, and you know, the, the last piece is, you know, there's been some serious accusations made about people at Gregory and some things said to parents, whether it be on the playground, whether it be in the neighborhood. That gets back to the staff at Gregory. And there are people that worked there for a very long time. And, you know, the, the issue is that, again, can't go into too much as far as personnel and decisions and mistakes that were made, et cetera. But it would be nice if we allowed things to work out, so we can show that there may only know, you may only know one side of the situation. And that's really important. Understanding both sides, and we have both sides of that information. So when we're doing investigations and we're talking to individuals and we're determining what next steps are, we have all the information. And individuals that go out and try to hurt people intentionally, whether it be social media, whether it be going around talking to people on the playground or doing whatever it is, that gets back to those individuals who've worked in that building for a very, very long time. And they've tried very hard to do their job very well. That's all.
Okay. Very briefly, Mrs. Mordecai, in regard to the dress code, first of all, I went through this with my own daughter at Edison. And I do want to thank Principal Fitzgerald and the staff. Recently, they made changes to address the critical feedback that they got, not only from parents, but a group of students that organized there, to address how girls attire was being, was being penalized. And it just was, it, it was unfair, it was, it was inappropriate, and they're addressing all that. We are looking at it, though, on a district-wide basis. So any feedback that any parents have to share with us or recommendations, we're also going to be looking at other school districts. Any feedback that you can share with us on how to bring equity and equality to how we address the dress code is, is welcomed. Because as I said, my own daughter went through this, this past year. In regard to another, one of the interesting points you heard from Ms. Mondriguez, did I pronounce that correctly? Thank you. And a couple other parents is a kind of, a different perspective in terms of, okay, if you're, if you are a Redwood parent or a St. Cloud parent, and losing, you lose diversity when you lose the English language learner kids. And that's part of your child's experience and the ELL kids' experience as well. And we hear that the concern there is taking a school that already has a little less diversity and, is it something I said? Taking a school that has a little less diversity already and making it less diverse. So, we hear you. And that's something we'll further take into account.
In the case of Washington, making Washington more diverse.
And making Washington more diverse would be great.
Washington is the least diverse school.
That is, I have been upset about how that's been handled for many years, and I can't even say everything I feel right here. And, Mr. Bennett, thank you for how you spoke up here. Appreciate it. And we'll be having further discussions offline, actually. There were other steps we're taking that will bring you up to speed on. This is Bennett and Mr. Bennett, and thank you. Did I miss something? Thank you to the teachers who came up and shared how you feel. I've seen some very, very upset teachers and administrators who are working very hard, sacrificing, as we know folks do, and, and when they see some of the comments on social media, it, it's appropriate to bring things to the board if you've seen something that is, that you feel is wrong. Bring it to us. And as I said, everything's been brought to us, we're investigating, already investigated. But please be careful about attacks on social media. It's hurting feelings, it's hurting lives. It can hurt careers and reputations permanently. So, you know, go through the appropriate channels, but no more than we would want our own children to attack other kids and just start to flail on them on social media. Bring it to the appropriate channels. You can bring it to here, bring it here as you have, and we will look into it. But please be careful about bashing people's reputations on social media. It's caused a lot of pain. And it's, it's pain that's shared, because it, you know, it's, it hurts the, even the people who weren't mentioned, you know, teachers and administrators, they feel that pain, too, because it's part of their family, part of their community, part of our family, community. I think that was about it. Had covered a lot of, a lot of concerns tonight and a lot of great-
You're begging for approval, Mr. Bennett.
Please, please, Mrs. Duran. We appreciate when you come up to the mic and speak appropriately. There shouldn't be back and forth and no errant comments, just coming from the audience. This is not, you know, we all want to conduct ourselves appropriately. Thank you all tonight, and-
Mr. Alpherson?
Yes, yeah, I apologize. Any other comments by the board?
I had a couple. Do you mind if I go back to agenda comments for a couple of real quick things?
Please, Mr. Alph.
I'll be quick. Ms. Mondriguez, I wanted to agree, the LLD change definitely should have been discussed earlier. I understand why it wasn't, and I understand why we routinely seem to have the problem, because we wait for budget before we talk about things. So that puts us here in May and June, which, you know, I, you know, I, speaking just for myself, I'd be really happy to see things done early before the budget with input already incorporated from the community. The downside to doing that, that we just have to consider the trade-off, is sometimes we'll end up wasting time, because we'll discuss something that we then find we don't have budget for. So by the time we do get to implementation time, we'll, you know, it'll be good, we'll discuss it anyway, but it won't happen. Ms. Gordon, I think, made a comment about, specifically about picking up sick kids, like how that would work, which was a really good point that I don't think had come to us. Mr. Arti, about the trailers at Gregory and the security issue of them. I think that's an issue that didn't used to exist as much in our minds, but it's definitely more on our minds now, and I think maybe the security audit will pick up on that, but that's obviously a real concern there. On Brown versus Board, I would just point out that, yes, we've read Brown versus Board. I've also looked at Lau. I've looked at the Castaneda test and the Castaneda case, and, you know, I think there's a lot of law there, and we need to have an actual written opinion on what grounds we would be on when it comes to whether or not there is a legal issue there. Because, yeah, there's a lot of cases there, not just Brown, and a lot that's later than Brown, but a lot of it's dated to like the late 70s, and we need to see what is really current there. Beyond that, I would say, A, if anyone ever feels that abuse is taking place in the state of New Jersey, we are all mandated reporters. Contact DCF. Let them investigate what you have, and let's resolve that. And I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. McAvie, Mrs. Asman, Ms. Torito. The tone, the casual collateral damage that's being done to people who are peripherally related at best to the core issues that are being discussed is, in my personal opinion, just disgusting. It's beyond the pale. It's outside the bounds of common decency, and I think we can do better and need to do better, even when the topic is unpleasant. An awful lot of us have these blue signs on our lawn that says, "It has no home here." And it's, it's not feeling that way, and I think we need to keep that in mind and keep in mind that we're all dealing with the education of children who get their examples from the adults, they say. We all need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alph and Ms. Mordecai.
Yes, just one quick comment. Just want to say thank you to the administrators and the staff here who spoke tonight. Just want to let you know that the board does support you, and to the public, we cannot discuss anything that involves personnel. So while you, while you see us as non-unresponsive, we're bound by our oath. We cannot discuss personnel. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. I am making a motion that we, in fact, forego going into another executive session. I have a date with sleep tonight. And I'd like to make a motion, does anybody have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, folks.